Meeting of Tuesday, March 18th. And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a few moments of silence to remember Gary Brown. And when you're ready, the rule call, please. Whoops, that might be a little too loud.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. Do we have any announcements or written communications?
I have an announcement. Your statement of economic interest, Form 700s, due April 1. The city staff received two communications regarding item seven, Catalina Electric Car Company auto app rental permit application, and one written communication regarding item eight, advanced payment of measure C funds to the Catalina Island Medical Center. Copies have been distributed to City Council in file of City Clerk's office.
Very much. So we have a couple of proclamations we would like to give today, and Mayor Pro Tim Lavelle will start.
You're welcome. All right, so allow me to read this for a second if you would. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Deputy Roderick McLeod for his years of service with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Whereas Deputy Roderick McLeod has dedicated 35 years of service to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, with the last five years devoted to uplifting the Avalon community. And whereas Deputy McLeod has shown exceptional dedication to community engagement, fostering trust and collaboration between law enforcement and residents. And whereas Deputy McLeod has consistently demonstrated outstanding service through his unwavering dedication, professionalism, and commitment to safety and the well-being of the City of Avalon. And whereas through his tireless efforts, Deputy McLeod has made profound contributions to crime prevention and strengthened community ties. And whereas throughout his 31 years, Deputy McLeod has made a lasting and inspirational impact through his exemplary service to the communities of Los Angeles and Avalon. Now therefore, the City Council and the citizens of Avalon extend their heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to Deputy Roderick McLeod for his extraordinary contributions to the City of Avalon dated this 18th day of March, 2025. Congratulations.
Congratulations. You can look at me, or face the audience, or whatever you want to do. Or turn in circles. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Hugh Carson for his years of service with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Whereas dispatcher and law enforcement technician Hugh Carson has dedicated 22 years of service to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, starting at the Walnut Station before transferring to the Avalon Station a year later, remarkably serving the Avalon community. And whereas in 1989, Hugh moved to Catalina Island engaging in entrepreneurship and community service through substitute teaching and as a small business owner dedicated to growth and education. Currently, he and his family operate Sailor's Delight Ice Cream Shop, showcasing his commitment to the community. And whereas inspired by his sister, a U.S. Marshal, Hugh pursued his passion for law enforcement, achieving the role of dispatcher and law enforcement technician at the Avalon Sheriff's Department, where he dedicated his career to public service. Whereas Hugh earned numerous commendations for his unwavering commitment, willingness to help, compassion for others, and deep concern for his community, which shone especially bright during a storm in 2014, cementing his place as a cornerstone of the Avalon Sheriff's Department. And whereas each day, Hugh Carson works tirelessly to ensure the safety of Avalon residents and visitors alike. His calm demeanor and comforting smile provide reassurance and safety, instilling confidence in those facing challenges. Now therefore, the City Council and the citizens of Avalon extend their heartfelt appreciation and gratitude to dispatcher and law enforcement technician Hugh Carson for his extraordinary contributions and steadfast commitment to the City of Avalon, dated this 18th day of March by all the Avalon Council.
Great.
Congratulations. We'll get you all in the picture. Oh, of course. Sorry. Okay, the rest of the councils and all of you, and knowing Hugh Carson for so long, if Hugh could also come up and join in the photo. Come on, Daddy.
Sorry, she's really gonna need it.
Is it your guy?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
All right. Michael, you have an odd sunlight. Thank you. All right. One, two, three. Congratulations.
Thank you.
One more, one more.
No, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're... What's that? And Rocky, we didn't even call you Rocky in that proclamation, did we? This must be family, all right?
Oh, gotta get her in there in the dog.
Who was the young man back there?
Deputy Fander.
Yes.
Oh, come on. That's a deputy right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your department head reports are next.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. It's the season of public works. Public works is extremely busy these days. We're beautifying Front Street with new planting, new ashtrays, and fixing railings, benches, and a sinkhole at Step Beach, which I'm sure you've all seen. We're planning on installing new bollards on Catalina and Sumner next week, and more to come on Front Street as time and budget permits. The green pier restroom is well underway in its renovation. Matt Sullivan, MKS, will be completing the new flooring in about two weeks, and then we can move forward with finishing up the men's side of the restroom. We will then move to the women's to do the renovation there, which includes new paint, toilets, partitions, doors, lighting. The Public Works crew is still busy doing routine maintenance and cleaning up the parks, streets, and facilities, and of course, any storms that come, they do cleanup and monitor for that as well. They're also helping with some CIP projects such as placing guardrail at the top of the Burma Trail. Please be, please continue to be patient with us, and if you see any of the crew, please tell them thank you for their hard work. That's all I have.
Comments? Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Get my glasses on for this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. I've officially hit that age where I can't read anymore. Fire maps are due out from Cal Fire on March 24th. We'll start the discussion on those next month. St. Baldryx, great success, better than we ever imagined. We shaved 50 heads. We had 30 sign-ups prior and 20 that day. Huge thank you goes to Sabrina Garza. She did most of the legwork. She did a ton of work, and the event ran great because of all the stuff she did to prepare. I'd also like to thank her crew. She brought around, they brought around 50 people from the mainland, including her mom, Jeannie, Dad Gasper, her brother Bear, who did it for his 20th consecutive year, her boyfriend Noah, and friend Lexi. I'd also like to thank Serena, Yoli, Stephanie, my girls Lily, Lucia, teachers, Ms. LaSalle, Ben Guzman, Ms. Robinette, Paul and Tracy Romo, Avalon Rotary Interact Clubs, kids, Brandon Osagura, Sophia Degman, Paula Hernandez, Catalina Ponce, and our barbers, two from the mainland, and Lourdes, Melissa, and Amanda. Also like to give a big shout out to Megan and Natalie, Catalina Charlies, for all the donations that they gave, as well as Santiago and his crew. The last other two photo booths were from Betty Tejada and Sherry, also donated the two photo booths. That seemed full the whole time. Lot of great raffle prizes from the mainland and from in town. And last but not least, Mr. Gary Johnson, he was huge, huge help in raising money for this. Made over, almost $50,000, and he raised alone just about, just over $25,000. So big shout out to Gary. But it was a great event. Lot of sunburned people on Sunday. I mean, out in the sun all day. That's it.
No, it's not. It ain't over till you take off your hat. And who's next? Oh, there goes Rocky.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Since our last council meeting, the deputies made, well, I'm sorry, there were 29 calls for service. The deputies made 72 observations, which basically calls for service. They made 14 traffic stops. There were two arrests, one for domestic violence and one for drunken public. I just wanted to thank the city for the proclamations for Rocky and for Hugh. I really appreciate it. They're both extremely dedicated, and I couldn't have better employees or better people to work with. They're truly friends of mine, and I truly appreciate it. For the community, though, tomorrow we're having a goodbye dinner for them over at Coyote Joe's from 6:00 to 8:00. Please stop by, say, you know, say hi, ask something to eat, and just, I really appreciate it because those guys are fantastic. They work really hard, and you couldn't ask for better employees, you really couldn't. Any questions?
I guess I have a comment. The ordinance that we put in about the no riding on e-bikes and whatever on sidewalks is in effect currently, correct? Because you did the two readings and it's good?
I believe it's been 30 days.
So I talked to one of your officers and wasn't aware, so if you could make him be aware, and I just asked him if he could just keep a lookout and just kindly tell people to stay off the sidewalk since they're not allowed to do, ride those on the sidewalks anymore.
I'll do that.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions or comments? No?
Thank you.
Okay. So we don't have a Matt Baker today, and we don't have a David Hart.
We don't have David Hart, but I have David Hart's brother.
Oh, okay, all right. Oh, there's nothing.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So since the last time we gathered, we've had a couple of wind events, a couple of rain events. We got through all of those relatively unscathed, so we'll take that. Last night, we had one gale last night, so it looked pretty good on the outside, but the harbor was pretty relatively calm. So, right now, yesterday I went and visited our electric boat. It's in Costa Mesa right now, so yes, it's getting close. They've done a couple modifications to it, so hopefully getting it back in the next, I'll say, three weeks, hopefully two, but we'll give ourselves a week cushion. We have two patrol officers right now that are off at training at Department of Boating and Waterways for boating under the influence training. We have another two going off next week to threat liaison officer training in LA. We just got our pier piling, RFP, posted last week. We had a walkthrough yesterday on the pier with some potential bidders, so I'm looking forward to getting the bids in on that, getting that project going before summertime. And last but not least, stats-wise, since the last time we met, we've had four Baywatch assists, three sites, two medical calls, emergency medical calls, 15 enforcement calls, 39 public assists, and 198 security patrols. Do you have any questions? I'm willing to take them. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw. Let's talk about capital projects for a moment here. Okay, for five corners, we've got the storm drain underway. You see it going with the two pipes coming up. Hopefully within, by the end of this week, we'll be close to the intersection, and then we'll have a plan to go through that intersection, and we'll share that with everybody, all the traffic control that'll be necessary to be able to do that. And we're also working, we started today with the frontage improvements down there by Comeney, and we're working our way this way. We want to take one block about every two weeks. We want to get those four blocks where there's two houses per block done by the time it gets to Memorial Day. So that's our, our goal, so that we're not disrupting those frontages during the visitor season. We're also continuing on working with the property owners along Tremont there, finalizing any agreements that we have with them as we're moving in. And you'll see those come to you, some of those agreements with encroachment permits. Kevin talked about the green pier RFP. We had two contractors come yesterday. It was a non-mandatory pre-bid, and another one is engaged with us today. So we have three, it seems like solid firms that are coming in that are looking for this. And the way that we're putting this project out is we have it in a minimum base bid that will repair five or six piles that need to be replaced because they're snapped, they're gone, and they're, you know, that will hurt us as far as our ability to keep the floats on there safely. So we want to get those done. That's a minimum project, and then it ramps up in groups of five or six piles at a time so that we can see whether we're getting value as we add those piles. So then it'll give us kind of our buffet of choices, and then we can see if it's worth spending more money to do this, that we're getting value. Because that's what we anticipate happening, and that's what contractors have told us. That work, we anticipate it being done by Memorial Day, so it's going to be a quick delivery. So you'll see that come back at you on April 1st, on the April 1st meeting. As we get those bid results, we'll be able to make a determination what to do on that. And as Jackie spoke, we are, have the Public Works crew finishing up the Burma at East Whitley there, that retaining wall and the guardrail. It's kind of been quite an extensive project, you know, to be able to do the tiebacks there that we had Fisher come and do the tiebacks for us, and then Public Works has taken on the guardrail, not just at the pullout, but all the way up where we have that damage, and putting in a really robust system. And then we'll shotcrete the final wall to tie it all back together. So it'll look good, it'll be there for the next 50 years, and it also is, hopefully, a new standard for our guardrails where we have some of these wooden, just guardrails on the side, and, you know, they're rotting away. So what do we do better where we have traffic also? And then last one, the, on April 14th, we've got Wayne Perry, that was the contractor you approved to go back at the fuel tank there. So we're going to drill five test holes 20 feet deep, so we've got to bring that equipment on the island, and that's to determine the extent, if there is any other remaining fuel, you know, that was, that we found a little bit in the seawater, but we didn't find it in the soil around, but, so that we can close out that. Hopefully, what they'll find out is we can close out that project and be done with it and have no other further requirements. So that's what we got in store, and there's more to come.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you. Lots going on.
I think Matt's coming out. He keeps trying.
Oh, come on.
He keeps, he keeps trying, right.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just a couple quick financial highlights. Happy to report January TOT for hotels matched last year, so it kind of reversed the trend of, of missing the, the month. Also happy to report February nightly mornings were up 30%. I don't expect other February numbers to be up that high, but it's definitely a positive sign, hopefully, for the next month. Finance is currently working with departments on developing the operating budgets for next year, and at the next meeting, I'll discuss kind of a tentative timeline for presentations for the, the next year's budget. Unless there's any questions?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just a reminder, on Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here at the City Hall campus, we'll have our bulky item hazardous waste drop-off event again. We'll be accepting appliances, tires, sharps, and certainly household hazardous waste like paints, batteries, et cetera. We're getting the word out, so it was very successful in October. I am sure it will be a good spring cleaning event. As a reminder, April 1st, we'll be here in two weeks. It'll be here before you know it. So if you haven't registered your vehicle with the vehicle clerk, go online, submit payment, or come in person. We are open on Friday afternoons for the month of March to try and get permits issued as quickly as possible. Next, the, happy to report the reverse vending machine contract was signed and executed with Olens. We worked out the roles between CRNR and Olens, so that's great. And then tomorrow, I have a meeting with Environmental Programs Manager with Vons. So there's an update on that project. And then on Thursday, we have our kickoff meeting with LA County GIS to implement the LARIAC services and GIS project management. And that's all I have.
Can we bring mattresses?
Yeah.
Okay. Big, big item, not just electronics.
Yeah, big items, yeah, furniture, mattresses, washer, dryer, you name it.
Okay, all right, thank you, great.
Thank you.
This little town sure does a lot, you know? It really does a lot. Gosh, I'm impressed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. Just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night is our Planning Commission meeting for March. We have one item on the agenda, so that is a site plan and variance request for demolition of an existing single-family home and construction of a new single-family home at 304 Sumner Avenue. For the April 1st City Council meeting, I'll be bringing forward the annual progress report for our housing compliance with our housing element for HCD. So look forward to that. I imagine you probably can guess what's going to be on it, which is not a lot. And then I also just wanted to make an announcement that I am going to, starting this next month, I am going to be in town here at City Hall two weeks out of the month instead of just one. So right now, my schedule has been the third week of the month, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but I will also now be in town the first week of the month on Tuesdays and Wednesdays for people who want to meet with me in person. There's a lot going on right now, you know, on the city side for capital improvements, but also we've been getting a lot of information requests for planning, so I will be around more often. But of course, everyone's always able to get ahold of me via email, phone, or remote meeting when I'm not here as well. So any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First of all, I have, since Dave Hart is out, he left today, him and Marissa to attend a seminar. I have, get to live in the world of Dave Hart, of fun and games and good news to report out, so I get, I'm going to enjoy that while I can. So on Sa, and this is written by Dave, so I'll try to get through it. On Saturday, Community Services Department, last Saturday partnering with California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Conservancy's Community Engagement Department introduced archery to 15 local children ages 10 to 12 at Middle Ranch. Kids learn both safety, practice shooting, under guidance of CDFW instructors Ryan Cordero, Chris Bowles, Al Wickovich, and Alex Van, California Hunter Education Instructor of the Year. Also want to give a shout out to Chris Young from the Conservancy for providing the location transportation, and we certainly look forward to doing more collaborative events with both of those departments in the future. City is also pleased to announce that we're going to have the grand opening of the new community sports park back here, the, the former only skate park, on Saturday, this Saturday, March 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We schedule it in the early evening, so we can see when the lights come on. We have the lights, we have the ability to use that facility, and it's really been getting a lot of use ever since it opened. So residents are invited to participate, and the activities will be basketball, soccer, skateboarding. They'll have music, food, tournaments, prizes going on up there. So Saturday, March 29th. And then finally, just, Dave just wants to report out, 4th of July is right around the corner. Council tonight has on their agenda approval of the Garden State fireworks and the barge. Again, want to give a shout out and thanks to Curtin Maritime for their assistance. This year's theme is Surfing the USA, celebrating the island's beach culture. So Dave Hart is working with Jerry Dunleavy at 233 on a commemorative shirt for this year's event. At the next council meeting, they'll be unveiling the shirt and hopefully announcement of the grand marshal at that time. So it's close, and it'll be here in no time. And then finally, just a couple other things I want to address. At the end of Sumner and Catalina, we have ordered and found locations for, we'll be installing bolsters at the end of those streets to prevent vehicles from driving down them and getting on Front Street. We've tried a number of different options, painting on the roadway, signage, it's just not working. So what we've purchased are bolsters that will be, have a cement base to them. They will be able to lay down to allow emergency vehicles through as needed. We've gone down there with Fire Department to measure the width of their vehicles because obviously they have the widest vehicles that'll access Front Street. So we're going to start at the end at Sumner, at the end of the delivery section, and same with Catalina, and then we'll move to both ends. So you'll see those going up in the next seven to 10 days. And then finally, I just want to say, Chief Allegria had mentioned St. Baldryx this past weekend. Yes, I agree with everything he said, it was a great success, and he thanked all the people that he likes to thank, but obviously, he, you know, want to recognize his involvement with that. A year ago, when Chief attended the event over town and came back, and the next day said, we're, next year, we're going to have this here. Well, next year was this weekend, and it was a fabulous event, and he did a tremendous amount of work on that, and I just want to recognize, you know, everything he does for that. You know, and he continually puts the City of Avalon in, in great light, and an event like that. We just coincided with a Disney cruise, so all of those folks, I guarantee, are going to take that story of what happened, you know, and how that event, how popular it was, back with them, so, thanks, Chief.
I forgot to thank my guys as well. They helped load up the trucks, go down there, they had the old engine down there for photos, and the kids loved it, so I forgot. Another shout out to my guys for helping as well.
Yeah, no, it was fantastic.
And that's it, thank you.
City Attorney?
I'll be presenting two items tonight, so you'll hear from me enough.
Okay. Council, Councilmember reports.
I'll go first because it's real quick. Next Friday, I will be attending my Policy Committee meeting on Community Services.
I'll go next because I have hardly anything as well. I was out of town. I kind of feel like Henry Winkler at the Music Awards. Did you see him? He looked like he just got off the couch, so anyway. Because you guys are all so beautiful. I did have one question, though, and Jocelyn kind of tagged on it a little bit. I've had some friends recently telling me that they're having problems paying online. I did pay for my golf cart registration online, but there's other things like parking tickets and, you know, if you want to get your thirty-five-dollar, uh, non-residential thing to park on the street. Are you, do we have issues with that? Is IT working on that? Is there, did you know about it?
We haven't heard any.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard anything, but since we migrated to cityofavalon.gov, there could be some, you know, some issues that came of that. But that's good to know. I'll definitely talk with Michael about it tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, yeah. 'Cause several people asked me about it. I was like, I don't know. So if this wasn't the forum to bring that up, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. Sorry. But, um, that's about it for me. Looking forward to the large item pickup thing. So, thanks.
Um, just a couple of things from me. Met with the CPUC regarding the update for the federal funding account. So this is the broadband application that we had submitted through an outside vendor and written letters of support for. They closed the LA County funding round, but then opened up six additional counties that hadn't been funded yet, one of those being Orange County. And so they created a rule that seems to apply to us quite well, to allow you to apply within the county for adjacent county projects. And because this project includes access points both in Orange County and LA County, we're hopeful that we will be successful. It's a relatively quick round, two weeks of application, two weeks of review, two weeks of challenges, and then they'll announce the winner. So hopefully in a couple council meetings, we'll have some good news, and if not, I'll have updates. So, um, their team is, the CPUC's team was super helpful in answering questions about that. And so I thank them for their time very much. We also had the opportunity to meet with staff from Congressman Robert Garcia's office and the Mexican consulate. Councilmember De La Rosa and I both were able to do that and are hoping to have them come over for a visit. It sounds like we're close to a, um, date for the first visit to return to the island. And I'm excited to make that return, 'cause I know, Michael, I think it's, you said it's been about a decade since they were here last. One of the questions I had in the budget process, Matt and Dave, if we can please look at the possibility of creating a fund, we had kind of touched on it a little bit with DMV, but of actually having a fund set up that would cover potentially boat costs for day trips for community services, non-governmental organizations, who may not be budgeting for that, but would be of an essential nature to the community, and therefore it would make sense for us to cover those costs. So anyway, they're hoping, I think, to come over for the Resource Fair, and I know probably the hospital team will highlight that today. But that's coming up April 24th. And so there's gonna be a number of entities at that fair. I'm hoping that everyone in the community can go to it. There will be surveys for the Fire Department, for broadband services, for, what else? There was one other survey that's happening. The Lata grant for the CPUC, that's for the Lata grant for the broadband. There was another one, I'll think of it later. But anyway, there's gonna be a number of state, city, and federal resources there available for everyone to make use of, and for you to also provide input in the hopes of gaining additional funding or services. So we just hope that everyone can attend that at some point throughout the day. I believe it's 12:30 to 6:00 PM, and that would be great to see you all out there. And then I have Gateway City's COG coming up, and just wanted to say thank you again to both Hector for his advocacy, and if anyone does need anything with Metro, Fernando Dutra is our primary point person for that, and he has asked for input on any suggestions that he may be able to go to bat for us on. So.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
So who's actually hosting the Resource Fair?
I believe Gail Spearheading at the hospital is spearheading it.
Oh, okay.
But it's, Janice Hahn's office will be in attendance. There will be SCAG representatives there. There will be hopefully Mexican consulate and immigration rights.
Right, okay. I didn't know who, who the, who the umbrella was.
Yeah, the umbrella's the hospital.
And I imagine they would be helping, they could also help with transportation and as well with other folks.
Honestly, there's gonna be everything. It's everything you can think of where they're gonna be there.
It's the kitchen sink of Resource Fairs.
Yes.
Oh, I understand that. But if there's, if there's any money.
Transportation to get there, you mean for that, or money for transportation?
Whatever. I mean, are we hosting them, or are they providing, provide lunch for these folks? Do they, what, maybe you can talk about that a little later, 'cause, I mean, do they come over and then we just leave them on their own?
Last time they had food, and it was a shorter Resource Fair, and this one's a lot longer, so I would assume. But of course, we'll double check.
Okay. I just didn't know who, where the responsibility lies to do these things.
And then with previous stuff, like we've helped out with funding people's boat tickets or buying lunch or dinner afterwards. So I know for a couple people, we were talking about doing that possibly again this time, but yeah, yeah.
All right.
Oh, yeah. I have other stuff as well. But like Lisa mentioned, we're still in constant contact with all of our representatives, and just so thankful for them because they're constantly helping us find new contacts, so new entities, new organizations. And also thank you to them because I know that it is a bit of a financial hassle sometimes, but they're always willing to find a way to extend their resources to our communities. So I'm extremely thankful for that. I'm still working on everything I've mentioned on the other meeting, so that's still in progress. But another thing that we are starting to look into is exploring mental health resources for the community, and that's along with Tessa Hernandez and her new employer, which is Lotus Light Therapy and Wellness Center. So we'll start looking into that and see how else we can give that to the community. I did want to mention that we have open houses Thursday, March 20th, from five to seven PM. They will also have the book fair open tomorrow, but that's until three thirty PM. But on Thursday, they will have it open from five thirty to eight PM. And then as well, we have, we are celebrating the Avalon High School's 2024 Eight-Man Football CIAF Championship Spring Ceremony. It will be this Saturday, March 22nd, in the gym at five thirty PM. So again, congratulations, Lancers.
That's wonderful. And every time that Matt King comes up, he talks about domestic violence. Every two weeks, there's at least one or two domestic violent, domestic violence cases. And so I don't know.
I know there has been conversations about trying, we had an organization called Sucasa that was working with Tessa. But we didn't, we weren't able to finalize anything, but it's, it's always something we're exploring and we are not gonna give up on. The good thing is that whenever there is cases and there's people that are willing to reach out for the help, we are able to help with whatever resources we do have available.
And that's through Women's Forum or who?
That has been through the Women's Forum and a couple hotels have been willing to help. Yeah, of course. And then I did want to ask if we do have any updates on the possibility of the lights stay no longer at Joe Machado?
What we've, we're trying to get some pricing on that, so Council can make that decision based upon, it's a, it's significant, and, and we'll be able to get that. But what we found is when we opened up the courts back here, a lot of the older, the adult soccer moved there, 'cause the lights were up here, and we're seeing a lot more play in the back. But talking with Dave Hart, we're gonna, we're gonna bring that back to Council and let you make a decision on, based on the cost of that. Because those right now, when we had a study done, was the, significantly the highest electric costs that we had.
I'd agree. I mean, I know this area is a lot safer instead of having to go all the way up to Joe Machado, so if that works out.
Sure.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. We have a lot on our agenda, so we're gonna move into oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. That would be Paul.
Hello. I'm gonna be a little more vague than usual. LA County Library, the big fat one, the Avalon Library is part of, has received a grant from an organization called Learn Basic Tech. They're apparently at the bigger libraries. They come on in, they do, do free computer classes, and at the end of it, they give you a free laptop. They've reached out to me saying, we're very eager to come out to Avalon, but this is sort of early, let's figure out how to do it days. What I'm going to need is people to come up to me at some point and say, I want a free laptop, and I can add their name to the list, and I'll send this list to Learn Basic Tech, and they'll say, oh, we'll have twenty-five laptops, and we can bring them out and do the class. I believe as far, if, if, I understand the program right, it is an eight-hour class on computer technology, no agenda, just computer stuff. And then at the end of it, you get a laptop. So come on up to me at the library, let me know of interest. I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no. That stuff is out of my hands. But they want to know what the interest of the town would be for a program like that. So please, let me know what you guys think, and the public as well.
And who is that open to?
I, I think it's meant for people who are on the other side of the digital divide, both economically, there you go.
Oh, no.
Economically and, and digitally, you know, without, any age, any age.
I mean, I could bring my own laptop. I don't need a laptop. I just need to know how to use it.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's, I, I really would love to have classes at the, I'm no expert in teaching that stuff, though I should probably bone up and do it.
Put me on the list.
Okay. Yep, very good. All right. Also, just back to regular programs, this Friday, we're hosting the Barnes Del Art, Friends of the Barnes Del Art Center. They're gonna come and do a beautiful art project with kids. They're gonna make clay birds and a nest in honor of spring. I love this group. I love having them out. They're from Hollywood. They do like all sorts of really good programs at other libraries and institutions. Coming up in early April, I'm hosting a bilingual storytime with an emergent literacy expert by the name of Mama Maestra. That's gonna be a lot of fun, bilingual storytime. It's gonna be great. Mid-April, on the 24th, I'm going to have a concert hosted by a Johnny Cash tribute imitator. I'm so excited about that. I don't know if anybody else loves Johnny Cash, but I do. So also storytimes, Saturdays at eleven, Play and Explore for Toddlers, Fridays at eleven. I'm adding a baby storytime in there at eleven o'clock. History Talk, second and fourth, Wednesdays at two. We're hosting Chuck Liddell, and Sandy Putnam has come to the last bunch of them, is allowing me to talk about it. So we're getting more of a discussion of history stuff, which I think is really good. Crafts, Tuesdays and Fridays at four, and a whole bunch of other stuff. Come and get your, come and get your calendar, come down to the library, and we got all sorts of new books. So thank you very much.
Do you use email addresses to get your information out to your people that have their cards?
Um, we do not send out an email letter, but we might at some point. That's actually, some of the other libraries do have that. I don't think I've been selected for that program.
Because unless they're watching here, or, you know, 'cause some of your numbers, I mean, I'm sure you'd like to beef up the numbers of the people that attend all these things, and if, I don't know if, after I take the tech class, I can put that on there and I can send it out.
Yeah. There is, some of the other libraries have a computer program that sends out emails to everybody who's left their email. It's still a pilot program in the county system, so we're not one of the libraries selected for it yet. All right. Thank you very much.
Other oral communication? Okay. Do we have a public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. You're in black, I couldn't see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few community reminders. On behalf of Love Catalina Island, we will be hosting our monthly March Business Mixer this Thursday out at Maverick Helicopters. It's a, pretty much a not-to-be-missed mixer, I would say, 'cause there's helicopter rides, there's delicious food from Cafe Metropole. Call 310-510-1520 to RSVP. And if you are in the habit of coming to our mixers that normally start at six, this one starts at four, because we want more hours of daylight for those rides. Also sharing the good news that Otillo is back, coming to the island on April 27th, 2025. You may remember, that's the multi-discipline sport where you swim and, and run, and you, you know, you run in wetsuits and you swim in tennis shoes. And they were unable to return as planned originally for a three-year run minimum with us, because they were the last event we had before COVID closed everything down. So now worldwide events have finally conspired to allow them to come back to the island. Mark your calendars for the annual Taste Around of Avalon. It will be May 29th. Pride this year will be June 6th and 7th, with the 7th being the Saturday where we'll have all-day programming on the stage again. And we have finalized our 2025 Summer Concert Series, featuring this year Trey Hill, a country artist, on June 14th, Knight Rider, an eighties band, on July 19th, and our always most popular ABBA Tribute with the Exceptional Music Company on August 16th. And finally, just in case you were wondering or want to plan your day accordingly, or have your staff out accordingly, the Disney ship that was scheduled for today will now be visiting us tomorrow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bryce Noel, Catalina Island Health. I do apologize, Gail is not with us tonight. She is back east, but she will have a robust update on the Resource Fair when she gets back into town. I do know that that email thread is long and has a whole lot of names on it, so it should be a good time. There was a question about sponsorship opportunities. I can tell you that the only thing, as far as I know, that is not covered by agencies or the county, is food. And if any of you have been, Lupe's tacos are sort of a famous thing now. So if there's an interest in assisting the hospital with that, we've sort of fitted the bill for that for the last couple.
Great. Thanks, Bryce.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing.
Public hearing, we have TD Article VIII hearing. This is for Metro Transit Authority. Do we have somebody here from Metro or online? Nope, we don't. So this is, Metro, MTA is required to hold a public hearing in the community's unmet public transit needs in accordance with Transportation Development Act, TDA Article VIII. TDA Article VIII funds are currently being used by the city of Avalon to fund the.
Somebody's on.
So we have somebody on, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Juan.
Okay. Either Juan or Harrison, are you on?
Yes. I'm here. Thank you. Good afternoon. Mayor, City Council, and city staff, thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to be part of your city council today. I'm here with my colleague Harrison Sutton, and we're here representing LA Metro and the TDA program. Just to remind folks, notify folks that, notify the public that we're currently accepting comments through April 1st. And we do have a written statement that we would like to read if that's okay.
Should I open it first?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
All right.
When you're ready.
Okay, here we go. The public portion of this meeting is held to hear testimony regarding the allocation of Transportation Development Act, TDA Article VIII funds. The California Transportation Development Act enacted in 1972, Senate Bill 325, provides the major sources of state funds to support public transit services. One quarter of a cent is collected as part of the statewide retail sales tax in this county, and placed in a local transportation fund, TDA 3, 4, and 8, which is used to, which is used to support transit, public transportation within the county. The TDA funds are divided as follows. TDA 4 recipients receive approximately ninety-one percent. TDA 3 is capped at two percent, and TDA Article VIII receives approximately a six percent share. By statu, most of the money, the ninety percent share in Los Angeles County, goes to support the operation of our regional bus service, Metro, and the municipal operators such as Long Beach Transit and Santa Monica. These services are funded in part by TDA Article IV. Additionally, some of the funds are used to support facilities for pedestrians and bicycles. This is known as TDA Article III for the two percent share. Article VIII of the TDA requires that a proportional share, based on population, approximately six percent share, of the sales tax revenue be allocated to those areas in the county that do not have metro service, because they are located outside metro service area. These areas are in the Santa Clarita Valley, the Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island. Transit needs can reasonably be met through an expansion of existing transportation systems, by establishing new systems, or by contracting for services. However, if these are not unmet transit needs, which can be reasonably met with these funds, the funds may be used for local, public streets and roads, road purposes. While the purpose of the hearing is to determine how TDA Article VIII funds should be allocated, your testimony about transit needs may be useful to local decision-makers who are planning plausible uses for Proposition A, Proposition C, Measure R, and Measure M funds. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, or METRO, holds a public hearing each year to determine what transit needs exist in your community before recommending how these funds should be allocated. LACMTA, also known as METRO, staff will compile your comments along with the comments made at all the hearings, including written comments received before the deadline. The Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, composed of local residents and social service providers, will will consider your comments and make a recommendation to the TDA 8 Hearing Board. The Hearing Board will make a recommendation to the, to the full LACMTA Board. The LACMTA Board will act in June or July to make the findings about the use of TDA Article 8 funds in your community. The LACMTA Board's recommendations will be forwarded to the state in Sacramento for review and approval. If you wish to submit written comments in addition to, or instead of testifying verbally, the record for all hearings will be kept open for two weeks after the conclusion of the public hearings. Written comments must be received by April 1st, 2025, for all affected areas. Your written comments should be submitted to the following address. Manijeh Hamadi, that's M-A-N-I-J-E-H, Hamadi, A-H-M-A-D-I, TDA Article 8 Hearing, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Mel Stop 99-21-3, One Gateway Plaza, Los Angeles, California, 90012, or you can be, they can be emailed to hamadiam@metro.net. Again, that's A-H-M-A-D-I-M@metro.net. The public testimony portion of the hearing will now begin. Please remember to say your name and any organization you represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before we ask for public comment? So, how much do we typically get?
You usually get around $200,000. For example, for FY '25, you received $202,757, which is still available for use, and for FY '26, you are scheduled to receive $156,044. You usually range around that amount.
Okay, thank you. And we're using our money in what way, so that the public knows?
Yeah, we get other Metro funds. We'll let Matt come up and address how we specifically use these.
So, we use the TDA funds along with the other local return funds to fund our land transit program. So, that would be Circuit.
Oh, it goes to Cert, okay.
Yep.
Circuit, okay. Because we're really, we're really not doing, in the future, we're going to be looking a little more at fixed routes. Didn't we kind of discuss that?
We're discussing that as we look to expand Circuit, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, does anybody like to speak on this? Then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Consent calendar?
Consent calendar. Item number 2, Approval of the Minutes from February 18th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Item 3, Warrants, Approve the Total Expenditures for February 24th, 2025, through March 7th, 2025, totaling $2,274,920.19. Item 4, Adopt a Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number 17-37 and Adopting a Records Retention Schedule Authorizing Destruction of Certain City Records. Item 5, Authorize the City Manager to Execute Agreements with Garden State Fireworks, Inc. to provide the fireworks show and curtain maritime for the barge services for the annual 4th of July celebration. And item 6, I would like to read the entire section paragraph on this just because it's such an important and generous offer, that being that the City of Avalon Fire Chief was contacted by a representative from Edison International, interested in supporting the city fire department with the Wildlands fire efforts. After a number of meetings, Edison International has agreed to fund the purchase of a new fire engine in the amount not to exceed of $600,000. So, we'd ask Council to authorize the city manager or his designated to execute a contribution agreement with Edison International.
I'd like to pull that one just for comment. I know Selena's here, so if we could have, what's your pleasure on items 1 through 5?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 5.
One second.
One second. If no comments, call for the vote. Oh, I forget already.
All eyes?
On the Edison item, because it's been pulled for discussion.
It's a fire truck.
It's an agreement between the city and Edison.
I must recuse myself because I work for Edison.
Okay, so item number 6.
Good evening, Mayor Marshall and members of the city council. Selena Luna, Government Relations Manager at Southern California Edison. I just wanted to give a couple of brief remarks. Edison is really proud to partner with the City of Avalon in strengthening our wildfire resiliency and emergency response. Our contribution towards a fire truck represents our continued commitment to this community and the residents and the first responders that serve your community. By working together, we can enhance Catalina's ability to respond swiftly to any emergencies that start. And I'm just here tonight on behalf of Edison to thank you guys for considering this partnership. So, thank you so much.
Great, well, thank you. That's exciting. So, I have a couple of questions, though. Fire chief? A new fire truck is only $600,000?
Well, it's called what we call a Type 3. So, a Type 1 engine is the ones that we have, that we, our first-out engine holds 800 gallons of water, has a 1,250 GPM pump. This one is a Type 3. It's a 4x4, so we don't have a 4x4. When we send our Engine 2 out, which is, it's a, call it a Type 2, 500 gallons, has a larger pump. This one has 4x4 capabilities, and it also has just a 1,000 GPM pump, but it's more built for the wildland and the urban interface. So, anything Our Trail, Jordal's Yard, anywhere else, up a little trail, hill we need to get to, and then we could send that out in the hills for our mutual aid, and we still keep the engine in town, because when we did it, we didn't have an engine. So, we're not getting rid of anything. We're adding one, so that can go out, and we're still have two engines and a truck in town.
Excellent. That's exciting. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Did you get to go through the catalog, Mikey, and pick out the one you wanted?
It's been a process. There's a few we wanted, but just the timing, they've sold. Right now, a wait for a fire engine could take up to four years. We're lucky that we've got possibly a couple of options that could be delivered in December.
Oh, exciting. Okay, excellent.
Once this is all executed, we're going to be doing our homework, and we'll be at the next council meeting with the answer.
Matt, did you want to say something? Oh, okay. All right, Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager or his designated to execute a contribution agreement with Edison International.
One second.
Second, and call for the vote.
Mayor Marshall, if you could. Four eyes, one abstention. Councilmember Shigley.
And item number 7.
Okay, general business. Item number 7, Catalina Electric Car Company Autoat Rental Permit Application. And initially, from a staff report standpoint, we have Jocelyn Francis.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. So, tonight before you is an application for a company that wants to rent out electric autoats, and they have a presentation for you. You receive the business proposal and the application. I just want to note that you all have received a similar proposal before, last year. So, I just want you to take note of that. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, council members, city employees, and Scott. I'm Mike King of Catalina Yamaha, and in July of 2024, my one and only mechanic decided to accept a job with a local organization in the middle of the summer. As we all know, this leaves the business in a poor position. At that time, I decided Catalina Yamaha would close down its service department to regroup, and we did. Along came Matt Affolder. He had always been interested in the business, and he is a Yamaha person. Matt, much to my surprise, is an educated businessperson. With that information, I hired him on as a business consultant and prospective buyer. Matt and I connected extremely fast, especially about Catalina Yamaha was built by the community, investments from the community. Soon, we had the service department back, opened, and running again. Matt was running our profit and loss comparisons and questioned why our golf car sales had drastically dropped in the last two years. The state of California's prohibition of gas golf cars has reduced our golf car sales over 50%. What can we do to supplement our lost revenue stream? So, along comes Catalina Electric Car Company. That was the name of Catalina Yamaha before we changed the name to Catalina Yamaha. In 1979, the Yamaha gas golf car revolutionized the golf car world. The electric car went into hibernation for about 35 years. The electric car now has come full circle and is mandated by the state of California as the only source of new golf car transportation. Yamaha Motor Corporation USA produces a high-quality electric car that outperforms its own gas golf car. Okay, back to business. What niche can Catalina Yamaha fill that our community needs and is not being served? 24-hour electric golf car rentals is what has been asked for about years, four years. Not specifically electric, but just a rental for people to have for a full 24 hours or longer. Catalina Yamaha has the products. Catalina Yamaha has the location, and Catalina Electric Car has put together a very well-thought-out program to service the community. Catalina Electric Car Company is requesting the approval of 12 electric golf car transportation permits to serve the community and its visitors. This will help Catalina Yamaha's lost revenues and help keep Catalina Yamaha solvent for the future. Please give Catalina Electric Car Company opportunity to prove electric cars can do the job. This is kind of the past history on how we got here. I would like to invite Matt up now to speak about his research and what he has to input.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor, and city staff. My name is Matt Affolder, and I'm here with Mike as manager of Catalina Yamaha. You just heard from Mike about some of the challenges we're facing in the current environment. But one of the things I want to focus on is the broader impact this proposal could have on Avalon as a whole, and why so many residents and businesses support it. I went out yesterday, and I talked to people. I went out and got signatures from them to support this. I talked to 168 people, and we got 165 yes signatures. And they were overwhelmingly supportive of it. We had business owners like Bart Glass from Hamilton Cove and Lalo Hernandez from CIVR, which signed in support because they, we keep their operations running smoothly, and they want to see us continue to serve the community. We also got lots of working-class people, people that need their carts to take their kids to school, people that would like other options if they want to be able to move, that they can get a utility vehicle. If they have family come in from out of town, they can get an extra vehicle. If their friends ask them to borrow their cart, they can now tell them, no, go rent down there. We had pretty much everybody that I spoke with said that this was a good idea, something that was needed. And in fact, a few residents and businesses told us that they may even prefer renting a vehicle when needed instead of owning one, which could actually work towards reducing the total number of carts in Avalon. We had such good enthusiasm over it, even one of the other hourly golf cart rental owners signed in our favor because he recognized that this fills a gap rather than competes. Interestingly enough, we have seen very strong support from vacation rental owners who are struggling to get insured because they provide golf carts with their properties. And with the new insurance regulations, their carriers are now dropping them due to the vehicle liability. In fact, I spoke with one owner yesterday, and she said that without insurance, she might have to sell her vacation rentals. But that if this proposal was approved, she would literally remove her two current vacation rental carts and direct all of her guests to come down and rent with us. I know that's just two vehicles, but I think this could be the start of a larger trend which reduces the need for part-time residents and vacation homeowners in needing their own golf carts. I mean, if you're really only here two days out of the year, wouldn't it just be easier to rent a cart from us than own a cart, maintain a cart, insure a cart? And so, that was kind of a lot of the feedback that I got back from the people that I spoke with. And, you know, I have in my hand those 165 signatures right here of people that overwhelmingly loved this idea. But just because people like an idea doesn't mean we should do it. One of the things we've really tried to put together while we've done this proposal is maintaining Avalon's charm. We don't want to stick a bunch of vehicles on the road just to crank it out and make money. We have tried to very much think of this in the best way possible to coincide with the Avalon Municipal Code, Municipal Code of 5-11.01, where we reduce pollution, where we reduce congestion, where we reduce these kinds of things. And, you know, we've made sure that this plan will not burden Avalon's public parking. Our fleet will be stored on private property when not in use. Our fleet will be made available between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. for rental use. When they're not in use, they will be stored off-street. Every vehicle will be monitored using a fleet management software and hardware. This includes GPS tracking. It includes dash cams. And it also ensures that if there is erratic driving, emergency braking, we get a notification immediately. We're going to keep a really good track on these vehicles. And what that kind of means is that our carts won't be clogging the roads or public parking, and any issues with reckless driving or improper use will be immediately addressed in real time. One of our biggest concerns is safety, you know, and we have talked to council members, and we understand that battery safety is a key concern, and we take it very seriously. But the reality is, electric carts are being charged all over Avalon, and they have been for a long time. Catalina Yamaha charges electric vehicles there for our stock. Every golf cart rental business that has electric vehicles charges them. Hundreds of homes and garages in Avalon charge their electric vehicles. Even the city itself charges their electric vehicles with the new Circuit lithium ions. And so, we want to do whatever we can. We implement any safety protocols that we can, looking at specialty supplemental fire protection made for battery safety. But at the end of the day, we just want to find a reasonable and responsible solution that addresses these safety concerns while ultimately allowing Avalon to embrace the future of electric vehicles. And what we're asking for is, we don't want to handout, we just, we want the ability to adapt like any other business could. And right now, we're stuck in a legislative buy- right now, we're stuck in a legislative bind where gas carts are being phased out, but electric carts are restricted. And if Avalon isn't comfortable approving electric rentals, we understand, but you know, we would then ask like, well, can we get an exemption to go backwards and operate gas-powered rentals? But we don't want to do that. We believe Avalon is ready to move forward. And this proposal is fully compliant with the city's municipal code of 5-11.01. We've also looked at the municipal codes of 4-41703B, 1, A, B, C, and D. Most importantly, it offers a real solution that reduces congestion, supports local business and residences, and residents will provide a necessary transportation options. We respectfully ask for your support for us and for the constituents that voted, that offered their support for us, to bring this much-needed service to Avalon. Mike and I are here to answer any questions you have. And if you have any questions, we'd love to speak on how our proposal aligns with the municipal code. Thank you for your time.
Who would like to start?
Is there anybody out there that wants to come up and speak about it?
George Quarrick, I'm an Avalon citizen. I have a... Electric golf carts, great. I've been really enjoying it. The only thing I would wonder about is if there are a lot of electric golf carts, are we going to have any public charging stations? Because some people find themselves suddenly, they need to charge. They got downtown and didn't realize their battery had gone dead. So I know there are a couple out here in front of City Hall, but having a couple other sites in the city might be a consideration. That's all.
Yes, excellent point. We want to, in the future, look at public charging stations. We've been talking with the company about possible available spots. We have no problem throwing money into that and allowing it to increase the public infrastructure because we really, truly believe that electric carts are the way for Avalon's future.
This question is kind of directed to the fire chief as well. First of all, when we met a few months back, which it was great, and you talked about, well, maybe starting out with five, then maybe going up to 12. So I'm a little surprised to see the 12. But I'm a little concerned. Could you talk about other people, well, in their garages? I don't know. I don't know anybody who has a garage to put their electric cart in. But I'm concerned, whether it be five or 12, where they would be plugged in. Because you also, at the beginning, said something about 24 hours, and now we're talking about 8 to 5. So everybody brings their thing in at 5 o'clock, I'm assuming, and then you charge them all where? Whether it be 5 or 7. Plus, you have the ones you're working on and all of that, so...
Yes, we'd love to work towards a 24-hour model, but really, the biggest issue is off-street parking and the charging. And so what our proposal is, is that the vehicles will be brought in every day at 5:00 p.m. and charged at Catalina Yamaha in a commercial location with sufficient electricity. And we have a sprinkler system there, and we're looking at supplemental fire protection. It's also a cinder block building, incredibly safe. And we have dedicated services.
Yeah, because I'm wondering. I've been in your shop before, but if you're working on vehicles, and then you have 12 in there, I don't know how you maneuver all those vehicles in that building.
Yes, we're asking for 12, but we're looking to start with six. If the six go well, we would then open up other areas of the shop to be able to store them and keep them safe. We do have the space in the shop. If you'd like to come down, we can show you our layout of what we'd like to do. And we think 12 is a very reasonable number. You have to have a certain amount to make it worthwhile for us. But what we don't want to do is get a bunch of rental permits and throw a bunch of carts out there. We're really trying to take as conservative a approach as we can.
And do you own the building? Do you own the building?
Not anymore.
Okay. Does the landlord, have you spoken to the landlord?
Specifically, no.
That would be something that I would like to see.
That would be something we would do once we were approved. Unless he says no, then we're out.
Well, this is the cart before the horse, perhaps.
Or we're out shopping, and you can go shopping, but you know. At this point, it's kind of like, well, let's not get...
Okay. Oh, I think it goes, I think you've got it the other way. But go ahead. Go ahead, chief.
So this is just like the last one we had a few months ago. We're not quite there yet. There's a bunch of new codes coming out July 1, 2025, for the California Building Code that specifically addressed this. It has not been addressed before because they just came out hot. So once all those new laws and regulations come out, we'll have something that actually, we're going to revisit the whole, even the e-bike situation, because there's residential living above a commercial space. It's not safe. So there's a lot of stuff that's coming out that we'll be able to hopefully enforce and adopt once the new building code comes out with this section in it. And then something that we just learned with all the fires, another cost, is some places are requiring the fire departments to buy forklifts and containers and flatbeds and stuff to handle these type of e-vehicle fires, because they don't go out. So and then there's, what they learned in the fire is there's different levels of contamination. Firefighters were passing out, feeling sick. They were sent to the hospital. They had poisoning. So now, I'm going through it. There's a bunch in Long Beach, a couple other, and LA County Fire. We have to come up with regulations on what type of degree were we exposed to the smoke. If it's in an enclosed cement building, we are going to be fully exposed. We have to get that gear sent out to a specialty place. It's called CO2 washing, which gets rid of about 98% of the chemicals, which means everything from, everything's going to be decontaminated. It's a lot. So they just learned this in the fire. Long Beach had a big incident. They sent a bunch of people to the hospital. They were all exposed. They did test on turnouts. The Fire Research Institute right now just set something out a few months ago on the research of all these off-gases. Now, if there's a lithium ion battery fire, we now have to evacuate 500 to 1,000 feet. And depending on the wind, we could evacuate more than that. So this is still evolving. There's a lot of codes that are going to be coming out soon. And I think a lot of things are going to change with our current e-bikes as well.
I mean, when we met, I liked the concept. I like that you were going to have a little vehicle so we could load our stuff up and we could move it around town instead of having the only one option that's there, or borrowing somebody else's vehicle. Again, I was a little surprised by the 12, but like you're saying, six. But I want to hear from the rest of the council.
In my opinion, I think it would, I think like a U-Haul rental thing is part of something that is needed in this town. But the way you've written your business proposal, just with your application, it's basically, you're saying you want to rent them out for tourists, you know, to rent for the day and go running around. And now it's 8 to 5 instead of 24 and all that stuff. So it just sounds to me like you're going to put 12 more carts on the street. And we just had, the last meeting we had was all talking about our vehicle problem and the amount of vehicles and the parking and the this and that. And now you want to add 12. I am vehemently opposed to that. I just, I think there's quite enough vehicles here. And then with Chief saying, he's absolutely right. I didn't even think of that, but the residential up above, because I know in my building, we have, our gas meters are in the building, and those need to be moved. But so I can see that that is a major concern if that's where you're going to be doing the bulk of your charging. So I think that's a serious concern there.
I met with Matt, and I thank you for your time in talking me through this proposal. You know, again, same kudos as I gave to Scott. I appreciate that you're trying to bring a new business that is, if our electrical didn't come from diesel, it would be a really great sustainable business in terms of helping with emissions in general. It's a good, it's a good first step for Avalon. The fire concerns for me, and we talked about this, are key. And I know that when I talked with regard to the previous applicant's proposal, mentioned we're not there yet in terms of having the fire suppression necessary for the city to be able to handle these types of situations safely. That was before Long Beach had the massive port issue and before hearing more about kind of what's necessary to be able to respond and what type of clearance. And I think when we were talking, my brain didn't even go to the fact that, while it's definitely better that it's a cinder building as opposed to a wooden building, so that part of it, in terms of structure at least, gives me a little more comfort, but it also makes entering for fighting a fire, if necessary, a little more challenging just because it's that one entrance. I think that I have challenges with the additional rental vehicles on the street. I think something that came up while we were discussing this project in the back of my mind just this past week after having the golf cart discussion was that transportation permits aren't required to wait in the commercial vehicle waiting list, which is fascinating to me. I don't know how to phrase it. So in that aspect, I feel like there's a number of things. I'm not saying no necessarily to the project. I think it's a valid project. I think it's something that, you're right, could offset the loss of revenue for your business. I know that you're trying to keep the business open to serve the people of Avalon. I fully appreciate and understand all of that. But I think there's still a number of things that make me extremely hesitant, at the least, with not having stuff in place already to know how we would combat something if it happened. Because it's, unfortunately, with this type of vehicle, it's not a, it's going to happen at some point. We need to be prepared for it and make sure that city staff, volunteers are safe to be able to manage that when it does happen. So I feel like part of me is, and again, I don't know how the timeline is going to work on this because we don't know what the timeline is, but I don't know if we should say, you know, let's revisit this in a future date and see if there's other modifications that we think would make it make sense. But I don't know that we're there yet as a city to be able to safely say, yes, this is a great idea, and yes, we can move forward with it and respond to it if necessary.
Well, and Chief Allegria, with these new regulations coming through, do you have any idea when that could be?
Should I do that?
With regard to, oh, I was talking to Chief, sorry, Mike. With regard to new regulations, what do you think?
They'll be released July 1 of this year, and then they go into effect January 1, 26. So it gives us time to review stuff.
And then we're looking at having to also fundraise or find funds for whatever necessary equipment is required and everything else, too, so.
On the fire side.
You may have some stuff in the general fund now we could use for it, but I don't, I think it's going to be not cheap, so.
Council, comments?
I definitely wanted to make sure to recognize Mike because he is definitely a staple in our community and has been for so long. And so just the fact that he's in this position is a little heartbreaking, and I'm so sorry, especially in the timing and how new this is and how much more we have to learn, because it is tough to be in a position where I love the idea and yes, we need to go electric. And I do love the fact that within your proposal, there was more factors towards the community, and that's where I was sold, you know, because one of the examples that I really liked was when there is a resident that's getting their car fixed, and you know, there's never really a timeline when you're getting your car fixed because things happen and you find more things. And when you do have a family, they were like, you know what, we may have the opportunity to loan you another car. And that's huge when you have a family or you do have family in town, whatever the case may be. So I did really appreciate the fact that when you guys were proposing this, it was about the community and not really about just making money for visitors. So that was something different, and then it meant a lot. But again, I think the hardest part right now, and I know I mentioned it to them as well, would be the safety. So it was, you know, talking to Fire Chief and then as well, talking to Edison, make sure that energy is all there as well. So for me, I would love to revisit this because I love the proposal. I just want to make sure that all ducks are in a row and everybody can be safe when we do this. And of course, thinking of how many, because I'm also on that we don't need that many cars on the streets.
Right. So and yeah, I'm sorry, you guys are so much nicer than I am. And kudos to you guys, seriously. I mean, you've put a lot of work into this, so there you go. Thanks, Jenny. But I think if you could skew it more towards the community necessity, you know, for moving or for loners or something like that, and work with Chief and the new regulations and all that kind of stuff to get them housed and be able to, you know, U-Haul it, so you say. I think that would be a very viable business. And so I'm with you. If we can revisit this after the new regulations come out and see where we're going, would be cool.
If I could, so it seems from the consensus of the council that if you wanted a vote tonight, based upon this application and the fact that you haven't gotten the landlord's okay, and that these new regulations are in, it would be a no. You could table it, work with the Fire Chief, come back with the landlord, and at that time, the city could consider it after you've had those discussions, rather than an up or down vote tonight. It's up to you.
Kind of want to address a couple of ideas that came up. Probably one of the few things that me and Matt have disagreed on is the terminology. And what we're really trying to get at is, I prefer the 24-hour thing, just like when we rent cars on the mainland. You pick it up at 3 o'clock, you bring it back at 3 o'clock. If you need to park it overnight off-street, then we have the spot available. So, or he might call it all day. I call it 24. So that's one difference. As far as the fire department issue, I'm assuming that you're talking about lithium batteries, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So interestingly enough, the old technology lead-acid batteries are basically what my tow truck's been running for 10 years. Our U-Hauler truck that we have in stock that we would like to make available to the community for people that need to haul stuff, pick up at the barge or move stuff from one house to another, is lead-acid battery. We have three or four lead-acid battery cars in stock. So for the immediate starting, if we just need to go with lead-acid battery and wait for the new regulations, we don't mind doing that. I mean, lead acid works. It's not like lithium. Lithium's the next step up, but it's kind of like the same evolution. When electricity first came out, it was hard to put out the electricity fire, and gas came out and the gas fire, and now lithium's coming. And you know, it's just mankind develops, and we got to keep up with what's developing. So if we can start with just the lead-acid battery, and that's the main issue here about fire, then you know, we are prepared to start at a lower level. Wait till the regulations come out, if they have better, you know, I did meet with Chief Allegria last week, and he said there was new stuff coming out, so he's researching that. And then the light clicked on and said, well, gosh, we got lead-acid batteries, and that's what we've always really used. And so that could answer that question for the time being and say, hey, no lithium until the chief has his directions for the city.
So I have a question. Would these acid batteries go into these new-fangled carts you're looking at, or?
No.
He said yes, and you said no, so okay.
Who said yes?
He just shook his head.
He's a rookie.
He's a rookie?
He's in training. That's why I'm here. And I will be here for a couple of years.
But he's doing a great job.
Because, you know, he's got the youth and ambition. I've got the experience. But you know, he needs to keep, get kept in his lane. And that's why I'm hanging out for a couple more years, because we want this to succeed. This isn't a get-money-quick deal. We're just trying to provide something and try to bring in some extra revenue from the last.
So answer the question again.
So answer the question again. The new-fangled vehicles can take acid batteries?
No, it's a different controller. It's a whole different thing.
So then what would you be renting in the interim?
Lead-acid batteries, which is...
I mean, what cart would it be in? Because it wouldn't be in these new carts that have all the homing devices, right? GPSs and whatever?
Oh, yeah, it could. I mean, if that's, you know, what we want to do.
I mean, that was one of the...
It's really just a different, the lithium is a different power plant.
Right.
And so the, or Yamaha's never had any battery fires in the three years they've put it out, and that's nationwide. They don't do the actual lithium ion. They have a different lithium that they have produced. I forget the name of it at the moment. I didn't bring my data sheet. But you know, if, if the lithium is an issue, and being with the fire department for 39 years myself, I follow his lead. He's the chief, and he's the one that's done the research. So I like to open the conversation to lead-acid batteries that have been the standard since the 1950s.
So let's do this, Mike. Okay, because if we voted on this the way it is, it probably would fail. However, if what the city attorney is saying, okay, it doesn't have to be as elaborate as you placed, put out here before, but I would talk to the chief again, say, okay, we're going to do acid batteries. You guys figure out if you're going to do it eight hours a day or 24 hours a day so that there's, there's no misunderstanding, and talk to the landlord to say, just to make, I mean, even though you're not going to be, I think you really though should, going forward with the, with the other batteries if that works. I really would like to see you have that cleared with your landlord before. With the acid batteries, probably wouldn't be a difference because that's what you're currently doing now.
We've done that for 10 years, correct?
I know, yeah.
And we've done the lithium, we've done the lithium for three years, and I specifically called in the Yamaha and said, hey, has there ever been a Yamaha battery burned? And they said no, and the Yamaha battery, lithium battery, is actually encased inside a metal container. So the battery is actually inside protective metal. So you know, as far as the lithium goes, give us and the chief a chance to do our research.
Right, right.
And then as far as the landlord goes, he's much better landlord than the previous landlord. So I feel pretty confident in him, but I just didn't, you know, want to sit there, and I think he's fully supportive because he needs to get rent too.
Yeah.
So, but it's definitely something to talk to the landlord about, but I don't think that's as heavy as issue as the lithium issue. And where, you know, other people are charging a lot of lithium's. Where'd you go, George? He's got a lithium upgrade. He has a Yamaha, but he bought an upgrade.
Okay. Okay, so do we feel like we've given direction, or somebody can?
Right, but I just have one more question. So on your, your application that you submitted with the city to go this far, you said the vehicle model is a Yamaha DR2A. So is that particular vehicle, you can, you can put the lead-acid battery in it, or is it strictly lithium ion? And if we say no to that, I mean, are you going to change what you have on here?
Is it a DR2A or E?
I'm looking at it right here. It says DR2A.
Another rookie mistake. It's a DR2E.
Okay, so does it come with, same question, you know?
I just want to make sure it's clear.
Okay, so can you put a different battery in it?
No, so it would be like our tow truck, which is lead-acid battery?
Understood, but can this vehicle be lead-acid?
We wouldn't be able to put a lithium in there. You can't...
I understand that, but can, can the vehicle that you're trying to bring onboard, the DR2E, can you put a lead-acid battery in there, or is it lithium ion?
Yes, yes, you could order it either way.
You can order it either way?
Yes, you could order it lithium, or you could order them lead-acid battery, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
And we have them in them.
Okay, but yeah, I think we have to make...
Everybody wants their lithium ion crystals, Captain.
Mm-hmm.
So the thing is, one of the excitements or whatever was the fact that they were going to be electric. And the fall of a set, and now he's getting them, but he's just putting the acid, lead-acid in there.
But that doesn't burn like gas anyway. I mean, it's like the old-fashioned battery powered.
So then, then we've got to figure out what, what it really is the, is the sweet spot. Is it because it's going to be rented 24 hours? Is it going to be rented because it's going to be nine? Is it rented, you know, then we have to figure out what we want in that arena.
Well, I think I also mentioned to Matt my concern with regard to 24 hours, which I think is where the balance of coming for a day rental made more sense. I think the hard part for me is that this, once permission is given for certain parts of this, it's very difficult to take permission back. So was curious to see about, you know, and in discussions with this, we talked about maybe having six instead of 12 to start out with and do a test phase to see if that made sense, didn't add too much congestion, didn't cause a higher number of cart incidents with regard to this, if people were renting from 8 to 5, to do a test, to see for six months or even a year what that looks like first before we move forward with more than that. So I think that's part of what I was asking about too, which we talked about. And so, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. And then the only other thing that I'm thinking through in my head is if we're allowing that for one company, then it would need to be potentially allowed for all companies.
Potentially.
So I'm just throwing that out there as a discussion point to think through as we move through this, if we move through this.
Because where do you think we ended up right now?
I think you ended up on having the applicant discuss with the fire chief, the landlord, and have an internal discussion among itself about what they want, the type of business, and come back after they've done that research and had those discussions with the revised application.
Okay.
I would think we want to add what the logistics are for drop-off pickup, how that's going to work on Clarissa there.
On that street, yeah.
Yeah, so if they could explain that.
Good point.
As they come back in.
Good point. Thank you, Bob. Okay. All righty, thank you.
Is that fair, guys? Do you have an F?
Okay.
Sound good?
All righty, thank you. Okay.
Okay, item number eight. Item number eight is a request by Catalina Island Medical Center, has asked the city council to approve execution of a non-binding letter of interest for potential advance payment of approximately $2.8 million from the city's general fund so that CIMC can participate in a program to receive a substantial increase in funding. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, this is part of a, this is a request from the hospital for an advanced payment of $2,800,000 so that the hospital can use this for a program that the state and federal government has where they receive matching funds. This is a very, very complex program, and so I'm having one of my healthcare attorneys, actually LeAnn Hapte, is the head of our healthcare practice at BBK. She's going to explain this program and the limitations that this program places on the use of funds that the hospital receives from, from the use of the city's funds, and then given those restrictions, what the options are for the hospital in paying back the city. And so hopefully LeAnn is on. So she's logging in right now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would just go over the proposal. This is not a final decision today. There's still some legal analysis that we need to, need to do. There's still some financial analysts that we need to do, and whatever deal the city would propose with the hospital has to be approved by the state. So if the state doesn't say this is okay, even if the city and the hospital want it, it doesn't go forward. Thanks, guys. Matt has a question for you. I'm just waiting. She's logging on right now. I'm getting the three little dots on her text.
Okay. Okay, thanks, man.
And can everybody hear us out there in, right in this room? Can everybody hear us today?
We have an echo.
I know. Let's deal with that. Does the echo totally make it impossible to hear us?
No.
Lift your chin up? Like that, that better?
Yeah. If you're not speaking currently, it's a microphone, it makes it hard to hear if you're watching on YouTube.
I'm going to speak into the mic further. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
She is.
Yeah, she is. Okay, great. LeAnn, I have given the council an overview of, of at least what the hospital would like, would like, but in order for the council to fully understand, I thought I'd explain, have you explain the actual program and how the program works and what limitations the program places on these funds. So everyone, again, this is LeAnn Hapte. She's the head of our healthcare practice at BBK.
Hello. I'm participate in a way to draw, participate in a way to draw down federal dollars to the hospital. There are restrictions on the types of funds that may be used to support these intergovernmental transfers, which is what is being requested. So under this program, if the city decides to participate, there would be, and if it is approved by the Department of Healthcare Services, there would be an agreement with the state of California and a transfer of funds the, to the state. This would allow the state to increase the rates to manage, for payments under Medi-Cal to manage care plans. It would allow the state to draw down additional federal match for those increased rates, and those funds would flow back down to the hospital. The way the program is created, it does not allow the hospital then to, for example, take those dollars received through intergovernmental transfers and send them back to the city directly. Instead, either there would have to be other sources of revenue, or as in this case, the request is that the funds be recouped from Measure C funds over a period of time that would allow for the city to recoup them. I believe there is a staff report that sets forth the full description of the program along with the documents that provide the letter of intent, a template of the letter intent, of intent that would be provided with the program, and also the attestation that the city would be required to execute with regards to the source of funds that would be used to support this program.
And so the benefit to the hospital in this program is the way that the state and federal government work is. They pay the state the $2.8 million, and then the federal government matches those funds and sends more back to the hospital. So the hospital will get more than $2.8 back because they'll get some federal dollars for that. But once they have those dollars, they can't use those dollars to pay back the city. So we need another source, and so what the hospital's proposing is the Measure C funds, which work out to about $700,000 to $800,000 a year, and that over the course of a couple years, those funds would be used to repay this advance. There would be, if council's interested in this, we crop this up to the state to get the states okay. It is unusual because the hospital's not a governmental entity. It's, it's, it's a private, you know, charitable corporation. And so that's one hurdle, the state has to approve this, and then we have to be comfortable looking at a number of factors that the city would get this money back to it, and that eventually we'd come back to the city probably in July or August for final approval of the program if everything works out, and then the funds would be provided in late fall or, or a December. But, so this is just a preliminary, you know, are you interested in doing this? And I guess the hospital's here to talk about it as well.
So the money goes to the state and then the state distributes? I heard that correct, right?
It goes to actually LA Care, which is the Medi-Cal agency. Then they, together with the federal government, apply through this program, and then they would then pay the hospital this...
Well, so my question was going to be, so once they get the funds, who is going to look over to make sure the funds are used properly? Like, who has that financial oversight?
Well, that is part of the regulatory agreement that is entered into between the hospital and LA, LA Care. But part of the, one of the terms that we have, if you want to use this money, is that the city be able to participate in those discussions and oversight of the financial funds. So that would be another, and otherwise. In addition to the state, Matt would be watching.
I have a question. Refresh my memory, what was the intent of Measure C? That's the sales tax.
That's the sales tax program that was passed by, I think, 78% of the voters in 1980, I'm going to say 88 or 89? No, earlier than that.
Later than that.
Later than that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, that, that was to supplement the hospital fund because the revenues that the hospital was receiving were not sufficient to cover the ordinary everyday operations. And so they needed those additional funds.
And we see those pass-throughs all the time, you know, in the warrants and stuff like that, so.
Because I just didn't want people to get it confused with Measure A.
Right. Which is what I read at first, it was like, wait, which one's C?
And then again, I want to remind the council that you also have the Measure H, no, Measure M funds. That's just for the construction of a new hospital. So those funds...
That's H.
Measure H, I'm sorry. Measure H. Those funds can only be used for the new hospital. They cannot be used for funding everyday expenses and stuff. So those are segregated from the C funds.
And I have two questions. In paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, it says, the state by specific services and types of Medicaid beneficiaries, and by whether the expenses were for administrative purposes or for medical care delivered to patients. Is that saying that this money can be basically just for the delivery of care to patients and not administration?
LeAnn, did you understand that question?
I'm, I'm looking for the specific reference. Is that in relationship to the FMAP percentage?
Yes.
So with the FMAP percentages calculated, you know, we, we couldn't say exactly that the, the hospital would draw down X percentage of match, or that these funds will draw down X percentage of match, because what will happen is that the state will calculate it, and they will take into account these various factors in calculating the precise match that will be provided to LA Care and subsequently from LA Care to the hospital.
And the percentage that can be used for administration versus patient care. They will decide that?
They will not specify that, they, I do not believe that they specify that type of requirement.
Okay, okay. And then my other question, which would probably come up a little later, is what if this doesn't happen at all?
What?
What if this doesn't go through at all? Not even from, let's say, we agree with it, but then the state says no or whatever, then what, what happens?
That's a question for the hospital, because they don't get our money. They don't get your money.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's fair enough. Thank you. Good answer. Okay.
If, if the state does not approve, then there will be no agreement between the city and the state in...
And then my other question, which should probably come up a little later, is what if this doesn't happen at all? What if this doesn't go through at all? Not even from, let's say, we agree with it, but then the state says no or whatever, then what happens?
That's a question for the hospital. Because they don't get our money. They don't get your money.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's fair enough. Thank you. Good answer. Okay.
If the state does not approve, then there will be no agreement between the city and the state in June or July.
Gotcha.
So, no trend.
All right, thank you.
Well, and my big, excuse me, my big alarm bell is that on Friday, it was reported that Governor Newsom dragged $3.4 billion from the state's general fund to fund Medi-Cal because the current federal administration is defunding social services. So Newsom is protecting what we already have. And so I see that this is a huge gamble. Because I just.
We don't lose the money if they don't approve it, though.
True.
We just retain the money.
True.
So that's at least positive.
True. But.
Sorry.
Oh, no, and for the.
I just didn't save the microphone, so I don't know if they heard me. I'm sorry. If it's not approved by the state or moving forward from the federal government, then we wouldn't lose the money. We just wouldn't, there wouldn't be, we would get the money back because it wouldn't be something that would be submitted for use.
No, we're not paying the money until one.
Until it's approved.
Until you approve it.
Right.
Until legal approves it. And until the state approves it.
Correct.
There is a deadline for them to apply for this program, which is the end of this month. That's why this is coming to you tonight.
Yeah.
Because this program has a certain date, and if they don't meet that, then they're out of it for this year.
And that's just for the letter of interest?
That's for the letter.
Yes.
So would somebody from the hospital? Or we shouldn't just call it the hospital, we should call it CIMC.
Yeah.
H.
C I H.
Oh, here it says CIMC. Okay.
Hi, Mayor, and council, and staff. Just so you know, I'm really excited that we've gotten this far because we have been turning over all sorts of rocks and trying to find a path forward. And this is what many, many other hospitals do along the way. And so excited that we would not be coming here asking the council or the city for a loan. This is kind of putting up money that we have been losing for Medi-Cal. And then like the council said, or the BBK said, and then the federal government matches it. So 2.8 million goes up and 5.6 million comes back. But I'm here to answer your questions.
And we get our 2.8 million back?
Over 40.
Not from those funds, but from your sales tax.
Your sales tax, okay.
Or any other, it could, let me just be clear. It could be Measure C or any other source of revenue. The hospital is operating at a loss right now. So.
Really? Sorry. So, okay, then the question I asked earlier is for you. If this doesn't go through, what happens?
As explained, if the state says, nope, we don't approve of this, then no money gets transferred. So there's no gamble to.
Your question is what happens to the hospital.
So we are pursuing several other, simultaneously pursuing several other permanent solutions. Partnerships with other entities, be they UCs, Cal State, University of Long Beach has been one of those also. And private hospitals. Jason and I will be meeting with Providence in a couple of weeks, I think it's April 3rd. That CEO reached out to us and was interested in talking to us. So there's several of those kind of instances. UCSD has been busy, but they said get back to us in the summer. So we've got several irons in the fire as far as that goes. We're also pursuing negotiating with another government entity permanent significant funding that would be occurring on an annual basis. We hope to find out a little bit about that in about six weeks. For a one-time grant, the next portion of that, we hope to know about that in July. And that would be a recurring money that would make up a good portion of these losses, put us back to a. And when I say losses, you know, if you're used to going to a restaurant and you're getting your dinner, and let's just pick $100 for getting a meal, well, the restaurant owner paid $50 for the food and paid another $25 for the staff and $10 for rent or whatever. So maybe he's making 15 bucks on the meal. But that meal cost him $85 to deliver it to you, right? Well, in that same situation for Medi-Cal, we get, out of that $85 that it cost us to deliver the care, we get $20. And you can't keep doing that when, and that's the cost. I'm not talking about profit. I'm not talking about some, a retail store that says, hey, 50% off. Well, they're just taking the markup down. So anyway, and that, those costs have accumulated over several years. They've accelerated. The state of California decided, it actually started a little bit with the ACA when the Affordable Care Act went into place. Many states expanded the Medi-Cal program to include more participants. And in the state of California, it was pretty small. However, with undocumented residents, they decided, hey, let's add some of those older undocumented residents. Ooh, let's add some children. Okay, let's add teenagers and young adults into that. So I think it's pretty wide open now. And that's one of those patient groups that we can't refuse, can't refuse service to anybody, and we don't. But it still costs us money to provide that service, and we provide extensive reports back to the federal government and the state government and what we have lost. By the way, the money we're asking for to put up as the match, and you saw that in the calculation, you know, hey, how much did it cost you to provide care? How much did the federal and state government reimburse you for that care? And the difference was 2.8 million. And that's what we're asking for there. So hopefully that makes sense.
I think the part of this, I know that for a lot of community members that we've heard from, this is a large amount of money. They're concerned with paying back, they're concerned with a number of things. The benefits, I think, to this, because there are benefits. One is just ensuring, first of all, that we don't lose the services we have currently. I think that's a huge part. Two, if you'll note, the annual administrative fee on the bottom of page three is 5%. That's actually slightly higher than the percentage in income we would earn in this money for when it's just sitting there and earning interest currently. So in that part, it actually makes me feel a little more positive on that.
Just to be transparent on that.
Please, yeah.
That administrative fee is designed to cover the 4.5% in life money right now, plus.
The cost to administrate.
The cost of administration and all the legal fees that we spent in preparing all this documentation. So the city's made, the purpose is the city's made whole.
Right.
By that. By that administrative.
So we're not losing money by loaning money.
You're not losing money by that. That's the way it's been designed, it's been calculated. That's a similar fee that we've used for other of our healthcare clients.
Right. And I think this is, I think part of the requirements agreed with Councilmember De La Rosa should be, there should be city oversight on this moving forward. And would hope that we would get back to the point where we were receiving regular reports from Catalina Island Health to receive financial updates as we used to. And that that would not be something that is in bylaws that can be changed. And then I'm assuming, based on the timing, that we would be looking at a three to five-year payment. You mentioned four. But I know because of fluctuations, that could potentially be five. So just making sure that we're realistic on when that money would be paid back through Measure C. I appreciate that the hospital is looking at a variety of solutions and trying to find things that make sense, both short-term and long-term right now. So.
So if this does get approved, we have to fork over the 2.8 in whole, right? And one lump sum, 2.8. If it goes, if the, if we back it right now and then it goes to the state and the state says yes, and so then we have to come up with the 2.8 now, right?
No, it's not right now. It is, I think there's two payments in the fall and early winter. So it's not all once, but it's two separate. Leanne, you can.
It's, the payments are made in late 2025. So approximately November, it would be paid in a single lump sum, November, December.
Oh, it will be a single lump sum.
Single lump sum, but not right now.
Right, well, that's what I mean. But when it comes to it, it's just one lump sum.
Right.
So, and this might be a question for Matt, but I don't know how, how, how full our coffers are, you know? So if that comes out, if 2.8 comes out of our undisclosed or unidentified or whatever, general fund, what, you know, if there's a disaster, I mean, I mean, how, how comfortable would the city be if we just forked out 2.8 million and then something horrible happened and we don't have any money? So Matt, that was my question to you.
I mean, well, none of us can predict the future right now. Or last audit of financials, our general fund had an assigned fund balance of around 16 million. So it would be a not insignificant amount, but we have more than the, you know, even if we were to give the 3 million, we'd still be well over 10 million. Kind of put it in context, our annual spend in the general fund is about 12 million on operations. When we were in COVID, we had about 4 million in unassigned fund balance. And as of June 30th, we had 16 million. I mean, there's always the risk of, you know, unforeseen, for sure. But that's kind of where we're at currently.
Okay, so 1, 1, 6 million, you said?
16.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry. Echoes, hearing problems, just making sure. All right, well, that's.
Well, does anybody else have, want to speak to this item particularly? Come on up, George.
I wanted to know if the.
Up to the mic, up to the mic.
And I just wanted to know, does the city have oversight of the finances of the hospital? My understanding, the city has not been given oversight of the finances of the hospital in a more general and broad way. And the question is, and I know that you're trying to get oversight for this one set of funds, and that would be supplied, but it seems to me if the city is going to invest this amount of money, the city should have a broad oversight of the financing of the hospitals so they understand exactly what they're entering into. And so that they, those funds are, they can see how the funds are being used, not only for this purpose, but in general, how the hospital is using its funds in the community. And I think that used to happen some decades ago, but I would love to, I'd love to. I think that if you're taking on this big a fee, a payment, I think that you have an obligation to have that responsibility in a much broader way over an oversight of the hospital.
Yeah, and I'll just add, so what the, what our discussions with the hospital has, we've added two of those provisions in there right now. Right now, it's just under the lease as lessy, we have minimal rights. But under our proposal, there would be an agreement that would one prohibit the sale of a hospital or change of ownership without the city management consent. And also that there be financial reporting requirements, including audited financial statements and monthly or quarterly financial statements at the discretion of the city until the advance is repaid. And that we would have.
In item 6, the.
Item number 6.
Future plans for hospital.
Future plans for hospital. We would be involved in those future plans for the use of, of use of funds. So considerable more oversight than we have right now.
Yes, but not full oversight, and it sounds like. And it should be in perpetuity, I think, so that it isn't just a short period of time of repayment. That's essential for this. But this is a hospital that serves the city of Avalon. We have a vital interest, all of us, in looking at how it's using expenses and how it decides what services we need for the community. And we certainly get input from the hospital, but we also have voices that go back. And in that regard, we need to consider what those services are and how we're paying for. So I think the, you know, we should work very strongly for have the city have a broad and ongoing oversight of how the hospital is using its finances, so, in the long run. So I'm just making that point strongly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was here at one of the last city council meetings when the.
Could you please state your name, Bree?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bree Bessard. I was here last year when the Medical Center said that they were in financial turmoil. And I remember at that meeting that you, Annie, asked for them to come back and to talk about the Measure H funds and kind of where we're at as far as, you know, the build of the hospital. To my understanding, I don't believe that that meeting has happened, and it's been, I believe, about a year or so now, or at least coming up on that. So I would just like to see a little bit more transparency, too. I am appreciative that they are trying to go through other avenues, but I think that financial, yeah, we definitely need to.
Were you talking more specifically about the new hospital?
Well, yeah, I think that, you know, we should be given a meeting and a briefing to kind of see where we're at as far as where those funds are at and where the build of the hospital is since we're in 2025. And from my understanding, this needs to happen by 2030. So I appreciate that the hospital is looking through all kinds of avenues to try and, you know, raise money for different things. But I think that just having a little bit more transparency would be appreciated.
Nice comment.
And I just want to comment, since, and Bree's right, since the date that that was discussed, the city council did pass and authorize the city to engage partners to do all the reviewing of that for every request that comes in from the hospital on the Measure H funds. It's reviewed, each invoice is reviewed by partners. At this point, those invoices are getting lengthy. They do that for us, they communicate with the city, and then no payment gets advanced until they've reviewed it and given the okay to it. So council did take and put in that extra barrier and that extra protection in there. And that's been being, that's been followed since then, so.
Thompson.
Dave Thompson, 110 chimes. Let me see if I understand then. So they're asking for this 2.8 million kind of advance from the city. Where's that money coming from? What fund?
The general fund, there's an unallocated general fund of approximately $16 million that is kind of like a reserve.
Correct.
Or.
And then what does the city, does the city just get that paid back? But how does the, right, we're not gaining, we're not gaining any interest.
Yeah, yes, we do, we get 5% back.
5% back.
Which is more than we use, than we get right now through our investment funds because that extra covers all the city's administrative costs for this advance payment.
And then, and then for the hospital, they benefit in what way from this?
The federal government gives them more money back, matching funds. So for 2.8, they get 5.6.
So that would, I mean, that, yeah, it's a good, a good value there, so. But I do agree that we do need to have more, like, okay, so there's, there are board meetings. Can anybody attend the board meetings for the hospital, or is that private?
I believe they're private.
The board meetings, are they private? And so only a few people know kind of what's discussed.
Your local community members are on the board?
Yes, some. Right. So. Uh huh. Okay, so we don't really have involvement directly there with board decisions, which is really what drives the momentum of the hospital and the new hospital. That's a little bit disconcerting to me, or maybe, I mean, the board is the one that's in control. So I don't know why we don't hear from the board or get reports from the board. Thank you.
Is that something we could look into, just like, for example, when the chamber comes and does their presentations? So let us know where they're at? Is that something that the hospital can do?
We can certainly have those conversations with the hospital. I mean, you know, as far as the direction or activities, I don't know if the day-to-day operations is what you're looking for, but as far as any significant decisions by the board or where they're going or direction, yes. I mean, this will, this will get us some of that while it's in place, if we go that route. But it doesn't necessarily provide for attendance at board meetings or a seat on the board.
And the, love Catalina, they're a nonprofit as well, correct? And can anybody go to their board meetings?
They can, but they get, the TOT money probably, you know, opens.
But once they get public.
Regularly funded by.
Okay, so once they get public, once the IMH gets public funds, then could that be a little more open?
It could be, well, you could make it a condition of the advance. Ultimately, we come back to the city with a final agreement.
All right, yeah, okay, okay. And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the board members' names aren't a secret. So if somebody wanted a list of the board members, they could call you and say, we'd like a list of the board members.
I'm pretty sure it's on our website.
It's on the website.
And it's on the website. Okay, so that's good. So Dave, in your instance, if you feel like there's no transparency or whatever the thing is, you can look at who the board members are and you can approach them individually as well. Okay. Thank you, sorry to.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Do you need a motion for this, or do you need just direction?
We need a motion.
Can we, but can we, so all of the things that we've talked, like you said, oversight, you know, that can't be changed by bylaws, blah, 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 all that stuff. So that's all going to be captured?
We would have to come back with a final agreement, and no matter what.
Okay, so with the, with the audited reports, too, I, can I make a caveat there that no line says "other"? that no line says "other"? I would like, you know, a breakdown, I don't, I don't want, oh, okay, we've got all this, you know, and then "other" is like this giant number, I'd like to know what that "other" is.
We can include that in the final agreement, what this, the state has a form of an agreement that goes for this letter of interest to participate in the program. And then, what we are asking for is, when we come back with the agreement, and we can have several sessions, where the actual agreement, again, there's still a lot of steps, we have to get the state through this, we have to do some of our own legal analysis, just to make certain that this complies with Measure C, to do this. And all these things go through, then we'll come back in July with an actual agreement, but we'll come back to the council before that agreement, just to make certain that it's, that you're comfortable with the final proposal.
And at that point, if we weren't, we could, we could vote it down.
You can vote, no?
Correct. Yes.
This is a non-binding letter of intent.
All right, well, you know, I know that the hospital, I mean, they need help.
Yeah.
Period.
Yes. Okay, so who are the rest to make the motion?
I'll move to enter into the letter of interest, which could lead to an arrangement wherein the city advances approximately 2.8 million dollars for Catalina Island Health's participation in the voluntary rate range intergovernmental transfer program, which CIH believes will result in increased funding for CIH. The city would be paid back through any available CIH revenues, including Measure C funds, over the course of several years.
I'll second.
That's okay. Call for the vote? All right, moving forward.
Oh, no, I just need Councilmember Schicklin's vote, real quick. All eyes?
Non-binding constituents.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, it's just step one, so we'll see.
Okay.
Item nine, options for city council considering tenant protection and rent control measures. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, if you recall, we presented options for the city council in October about potential rent control that the city could adopt. At the time, there was a measure before the voters of California that would have largely dismantled state protections for tenants, and that measure failed. The landlords were successful in convincing people to vote that down. And so what we're coming to you now is, again, this is a repeat of what the discussion was in October about potential options for imposing tenant protections in Avalon. I will note that because the state measure did not pass, this only applies to apartments that were built prior to February 1st, 1995.
Apartments only, or just rentals?
It excludes single-family homes and condominiums. So, so it's.
That's 1995.
1995, and the whole purpose was, this law in 1995 was passed, and at the time, the developers said, if you're going to subject us to rent control, we're not going to build any more rental units. And so please exempt us from rent. And the state legislature did that. So this only applies to units that were constructed prior to that date. Voters rejected making it apply to all, to all units. And so what you're looking at is, do you want to consider adopting tenant protections for those rental units that are not single-family homes and not condos, prior, that were constructed prior to February 1st, 1995? And there are various options you can, you can do. Right now, state law caps it at 10%. Other cities have gone as low as 3, 3 to 5 seems to be the majority of where other cities come down in terms of, of, of the tenant, of control. And then they do have, most cities have what is called a rental stabilization board, which is a separate entity, which says if a landlord can come and say, this just isn't enough, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of business or not be able to do this, they can get an exemption. And so the rent stabilization board hears that landlord appeal to determine whether there should be an exception to the rule.
So if we pass something like this, then we have to have a, we have to come up with a rent stabilization board?
I would be, our recommendation, too, because otherwise, you could just say that what we've done in other instances is you create a hardship exception, which you would do for the rent stabilization board, but without creating an entity for that, you would be hearing the.
All those.
Right, but, but curious.
Is that something Planning Commission could also hear, if we wanted to say the Planning Commission was acting as the.
You can make the Planning Commission the rent stabilization.
That's where I was going with that. They're all gonna quit.
They love me.
Okay, and so now, also, before we really dive into this, because the law did not pass, when I brought this up, I was hoping that it would, I wasn't doing. So, so in this town, that would apply to what, Tremont Apartments?
Eucalyptus.
Eucalyptus?
Eucalyptus is built after 95, before.
Oh, it was built in the 80s, wasn't it?
Okay.
Early, late 80s, early 90s.
Okay.
Then it doesn't apply to Bird Park?
It won't apply to Bird Park. It would apply to buildings like mine, I mean, is mine, I'm a multi-unit, it's never been.
For each unit, what we would have to do is go, hopefully, there's a date of occupancy in our plan, in our planning department, and you'd have a list of ci, a list of properties that would, this would be subject to.
Right, but so.
Now, I have a question, considering that I live at Eucalyptus, am I able to be involved in this?
Yes.
Okay.
And I couldn't hear about a fire truck?
Because it's like a tax, because this is, this is like a general tax that would apply, or a general regulation that would apply across the city.
Okay.
So, so where I was going with my question was, it's going to protect a very few, I was, I was hoping to make a broader impact on more people in this city. I don't want to appear to be selfish, and I don't want to deny people that are in those other ones. So, so Soul Vista is a condo, so that, and Bahia Vista also, that would not work, right?
Why they rented out is, well, they're, what's the difference between?
It's still a condo building.
Single-family homes are exempt, and that's what the state law tried to get rid of those protections and that thing.
So it would just be those two, and like, I think mine's the only other big apartment building.
Yeah, maybe a couple or a handful.
Yeah, just a handful.
But let me ask something else, though. New California laws with additional tenant protections, AB 12, limits the security deposit lands, or landlords can collect, can we do that with condos and everybody?
Yes, uh, I don't know about condos.
Okay, check that out.
I can check that, if you want to do, there are other protections other than.
Deposit?
Yeah, the rent control.
Well, and okay, does this happen in our little town, that all landlords in Avalon must also register their rental units annually with the city and pay an annual fee per rental unit? Do we do that?
We attempt to, I mean, we know we don't, we're not capturing all.
Okay, but however we could get that better enforced with penalties or whatever, perhaps, that's another thing that I kind of highlighted. And how about relocation assistance?
You could, so right now, in state law, it's one month, and some cities have enacted three months, that if you, if, again, if you're kicking someone out for what's called a no-fault.
Right, right.
Eviction, we could do that. So we can look at the things you can do, other, that apply to everyone.
Right.
And we can also, if you give us a little time, we'll come back with the list of units that we think this would apply to. So you can understand the scope of the impact of this, since the voters.
Right.
Yeah.
Silly people.
So we can, we can do that and come back.
Okay.
Right, right, yeah, it would be great to pick out all of the low-hanging fruit on this, and see what can apply to, to the most people in this town. Cause, so like, the relocation is like, if somebody's renting, living in this house for years and years and years and years, and then they decide to sell them and they kick it out, kick them out, so then they would have, they would, we can make it so that they would have to help with relocation.
We're gonna make certain that you can, so what we'll do is, we'll have, I'll have our housing people look at this as quickly as possible, and.
I think she left the building.
Oh, no, you're. To see if we can, see what records we have, in terms of when buildings, the major apartment complex.
Right, okay.
It's a good thing she's coming more often. More often than not, I hope.
Right? Well, I kind of like what Culver City had to say, they had some, the options that I'm talking about came out of Culver City.
So we can look at, to see what, other than the rent control, what can apply broadly?
Right.
But if we wanted, if we want to do the rent control for the handful that would benefit from that, then, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to that either. And I think the way that we're approaching it, I don't think the whole town would be mad at us for that, right?
No, but, but I know of a lot of these older places, maybe not yours, but there's some other ones, that, that the rents keep going up and they do nothing on the, on the facility.
That's totally mine.
And we had, we just got somebody the other day for that, I mean, but people have to come up and say, excuse me, maybe until we have these protections in place, but excuse me, this is not habitable, or this is whatever, and we can then inspect them, and then, and then they can't retaliate so much, oh, we put in this, and, but now you're, you know, your rate, your rent increase is going to go up so much more, those are the kind of protections we need to have for.
Exactly, and we do need to have the inspection program and all that stuff that, that was on its way, well on its way, until COVID happened, right? Was that what stopped it?
We had nobody to do it, neither.
What we can also do is, when we come back, we'll, we'll take a look at what is currently on the books in Avalon, just so you understand what is on the books, and, including, including the fees that we have in finance.
And I, and I really want to say thank you so much for, because I know you guys are working hard on this, and it was kind of, I don't know, my request, so I totally appreciate it. I feel like we're making some sort of headway.
It's good for all, yeah.
The biggest concern we had with the cut, with the inspections, besides the amount of people it would take to be able to complete the inspections, was what happened when. So when, when you start doing these inspections, I would suspect, unfortunately, that many locations have things that would make places uninhabitable. Where do you put all those people then, while it's getting fixed?
So does that mean we have to look into our inspection program and what that looks like now, and change it?
Let's see what it is right now.
Yeah, exactly.
We've had, and I just want to say, with, with Foreleaf on, on the books now and working, I mean, we have been in, they have been in rental properties where they've found exactly that, and the residents are faced with a tough decision. If they declare it inhabitable, then they're out. It's not the landlord's choice, it's the decision, you know, based on the inspection, and that's a decision we, our agent going into that property is making when they encounter whatever puts them over the limit to have them removed from the, from the property. So that's the difficult position we're in.
I think there's, there needs to be some kind of discussion with the landlords individually to have them make improvements first, before we get to that point, otherwise, we're triggering a lot of things that we may not have the housing for.
Well, is it possible to have some language where, I mean, there would be a preliminary inspection? And, you know, and we can spread this out over time, you know, because I know the manpower and all that stuff. So if we have a preliminary inspection, and they come back and they go, okay, you need to fix this, 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 and this.
We usually, the purpose of our inspection program is to bring people in compliance, and so.
Right. I, I'm going there, I'm going there, but I'm.
It's just that if we uncover in that inspection program, something that creates an immediate hazard to the tenant.
Such as?
Mold, mold.
And the mold, that's a, that's a big deal, too, because you can't just diagnose it, you've got to have specialists do that.
Unexposed wires.
Right.
Create a fire hazard.
We want to fix, we want to get fixed, but.
At that point, it's, there's no more preliminary.
It triggers them to have to be removed from the.
Upon seeing it.
We can't keep them in the unit, right.
But if, but if they've already lived there for years, and then it finally gets put in the landlord's face, you know, can you say you need, because, because we can't go anywhere else? So can you give them, you know, you have to prove that you are addressing this situation, and you have this amount of time to do it, and otherwise, you know, then we would deal with, if they, if the tenant had to go somewhere else? I don't know, I just, I think by just not addressing it, because of these fears, people are living in substandard conditions, and it just needs to be addressed.
Right, right. And when I talked to John Gilbert about it, he said, it's definitely a community, it's a discussion with the homeowner, the tenant, you know, and the city to figure out how to do that. So it wouldn't just be, I don't think, a slam dunk, you're out, and, you know.
Right, right.
And we are, I mean, we are committed to addressing it, but it's, it's not as simple as it might sound.
I know, it's totally sticky-wicking.
I know.
I mean, it feels like what they used to do with, with Tremont for repairs, when they used to have Tremont have to go through system-wide repairs, where they would say, okay, great, these four units or six units are going to be out of their place for X amount of time. It happened with the Island Company Housing, too, I remember, for updates, where there's a plan for them to have a place to go while those repairs are made. That's kind of the program that I think we need to move towards. If we don't have that, and we just start going to every single location, people are literally going to have nowhere to live.
Right, right, right. And that's why I was saying, you know, you could, you could start with just, you know, maybe, you know, pick how many small, you know, just, and just, so start small, and spread it out over several years, at least people down the line would be going, oh, yay, they're going to come to my house soon.
I know.
Yeah, well, and it gives, hopefully, landlords time to also fix the issues before we show up.
Right, right, yeah, and if the word gets out, landlords will be like, ooh, dear, you know, or something.
So we have direction, and we'll try and bring back, we'll do our research and bring that, this back to you as quickly as we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next item, last item.
Next item, last item, is item 10, discussion regarding cross-channel warfage. We'd like to discuss with council an increase in cross-channel warfage to fund anticipated capital improvements in the harbor. This issue is being brought back for a number of reasons that Matt will address, one being the current cross-channel warfage that was passed is scheduled to sunset in June, so we have to address it one way or another. And also, as Matt will lay out here, the, the very pressing needs that we're going to have in the harbor in the next three to five years, one to five years, I should say.
Good evening, council. To start the presentation, just going kind of a little history lesson of the city and warfage. Went through our audited financials from '05 to '08, and looking at the harbor, there was minimal activity in those years, less than 100,000 or so annually. Fiscal year eight and nine, and fiscal year 10, there's quite a few significant projects that we undertook, including the harbor office remodel and starting the engineering on the, what now is the new fuel dock. In July of 2011, council established the cross-channel warfage fee of $2.50 per passenger, landed, discharged, loaded, or embarked, so essentially a $5 round trip. That increased the prior rate, which was $2 per passenger, or $4 round trip. The city allocated 75% of that $2.50, so $1.1.875 to fund operations, and so that would be things such as harbor patrol, the lifeguard paramedic contract, trash collection, restroom, cleaning, that sort of thing. And then 25% to fund capital outlays. That was the rate that was in effect when we went to council December 4th, 2018. At that time, the council increased cross-channel warfage by 50 cents, or a dollar round trip. That went into effect on March 1st, 2019. The 100% of that increase was dedicated to new capital projects, and it was originally scheduled to sunset in February of '21. In October of 2020, council extended that 50 cent increase to sunset, June 30, 2025, and so that's what brings us here today. So this table here is a. June 30, 2025, and so that's what brings us here today. So this table here is a breakdown of cross-channel passengers, the per-passenger rate, and revenues generated from the cross-channel warfage. So you can see in fiscal year 15, the cross-channel passenger count was 696,000 passengers, and 10 years later, in fiscal '24, the cross-channel passenger count was 688,000. So you can see the, the count, other than the aberrations during the COVID-impacted years, has been fairly consistent, around 700,000 visitors. And so what that has meant, at least from fiscal 15 to fiscal 19, is that our revenues to fund capital have been relatively flat. So at the time in 19, we recognized we needed to raise additional money to fund some major projects. At the time, the biggest one being the first phase of the Cabrillo Mole rehabilitation. And since then, you can see what the, the annual revenues have been from the, kind of the base amount to fund operations, the, the amount dedicated to capital, and that additional money to fund the additional capital projects. So just real quick, kind of visually, you can see our passenger headcount has hovered around that 700,000 figure. And as a result, the cross-channel warfage dedicated to capital has kind of hovered around that 800,000 figure, as those two are tied on a per-passenger basis. Then you can see, this third chart is the increase of the warfage of 50 cents each way, and the impact that's had on our cross-channel warfage revenues. So I guess the, the first thing I wanted to point out is, what did we get for that increase? So back in April 2019, when the rate went into effect, all the way through June 30 of '24, that 50 cents each way, or a dollar round trip increase, generated an additional 3.2 million in cross-channel revenues. Where that money was spent, the Cabrillo Mole substructure repairs, also known as Mole Phase 1, the total project cost was 5.1 million, but after factoring the grant-funded portion of that project, that left 2.7 million for the city to cover with its own funds. In addition, since 2019, the city has already expended $500,000 towards the second phase of the Mole project, and that, again, is also after grant funds. So you can see, just on the Mole project alone, the, the 50 cent increase that went into effect in 2019, has covered kind of what we've spent to date on the Mole. But that still leaves other capital needs within the harbor. So the, kind of the base revenue, if you will, so that's that, 25% of the 250, has generated about $4 million since April 2019, when the increase went into effect. But we've had a lot of projects within the harbor. Underground fuel tank, after grants, was about $1 million. Floats 1 to 5 rehabilitation, so we've really done a better job in the last five years of kind of replacing or repairing those floats on a, on a fixed, more fixed schedule. And you can see we spent, in that period, $567,000 rehabilitating those five floats. Similarly, with patrol boat engines. Then other projects have included the end float rehabilitation. That was replacing the drums and, and the floats there. The pump-out station, that was a grant-funded project, but $200,000 had to come from local funds. We had some emergency seawall repairs for close to $200,000, fuel dock float improvements, the casino way arch. We've expended to date $141,000 on the South Beach seawall. And so you can see that the, those projects really kind of eat away into what the base amount that we have been collecting. And so if you were to sum them up, and plus I threw in for the five-year period, $300,000 on capital maintenance, and so that would be anything from bottom paint on the boats, to kind of the annual repairs Phil needs to do on the floats to make them work, as well as the mooring work we do on the mooring change, that don't maybe rise to the level where we can capitalize it, but it's annual maintenance that we have to do to maintain the facility. So you can see, that's, that's where we've spent kind of those base amount of funds. And so one of the things we're looking at is proposing an increase to the cross-passenger warfage rate. See, the existing rate is $6 round trip, or $3 each way. That generates currently $2.4 million in revenues to operate the harbor, as well as $1.4 million in funds for, for capital improvements. If we were to increase it to $8 round trip, and we did do a rate analysis similar to what we did for the cruise ships when we increased the cruise ship warfage a few months ago to support this rate increase, so if we were to increase it by $2 round trip, we would still be dedicating the same amount towards operations, so that's that $2.4 million. But that would increase the amounts to $2.7 million from cross-channel warfage. And so if you looked at a fleet replacement schedule, to, so to replace the harbor vessels on a routine basis, we would need approximately $200,000 annually, as well as if we continued our annual float rehabilitation, you know, that would be a further $125,000 a year, which would leave $2.9 million to fund annually, to fund new CIP projects in the harbor. And just highlighting three of the upcoming projects that we've talked a lot about, Cabrillo Mole Phase 1, or Phase 2, excuse me, the Green Pleasure Pier and the South Beach Restoration. You can see that adds up to around $12 million, just for those three projects. So that doesn't speak to a float six or a recreation barge, or any of those projects. So just to quickly touch on how I came up with the $9 million for Mole Phase 1, is, right now, we have about $14 million in grant funds, but a lot of those have a local match, so that would bring it to at least $20 million. And while it would be great to have, complete that project for $20 million, I use $23 million as the, the number for the project. And so if you take the $23 minus the $14 million in grant funds received, that's where, where we come with the nine. The Green Pleasure Pier, that is based on what is currently in the budget. So in the current year, we do have a million in the budget for piling and decking replacement, but there would still be, even if we spent the full million this year, 1.25, that's not funded. So if we spend our CIP as we have in the budget this year, we really don't have an existing fund balance to draw on in the harbor fund for these capital projects. And, and so the increase in revenue would, would help to kind of address that funding shortfall. And again, this is really just kind of to start the conversation, so that kind of concludes the, what I have prepared. If there's any questions for tonight, I'm happy to answer them. If there's any questions over the next two weeks, I'm happy to, to address those then as well. Again, we're looking for direction, if there is consensus from council to come back to propose a rate increase, but for tonight, it was really just trying to outline kind of where we're at as far as harbor funding, and where, what's needed to, to kind of accomplish some of the projects we're looking for. If you were to ask, well, what if we just kept the rate the same, kind of my answer to that would, would be, we wouldn't be able to fund the Green Pleasure, or Pier improvements we need to make, or the South Beach Restoration. And we would really need to look at scaling back the Cabrillo Mole Phase 2. And even with that, we would be looking at needing to borrow money, either from the general fund or from an outside party, to pay off the $6 million minimum we would need for Phase 2 of the Mole. And so then you'd be looking at limited funding available for the next, say, 10 years in the harbor, if we just were to keep the, the rate as it was. If you were to say, Matt, we want to go back to the 250, you know, we, we really would have no money for new projects in the harbor, and it would really just be kind of maintaining the existing infrastructure we have.
So, I, I think I got it. So what you're proposing is you want to put $2 more dollars on the boat ticket. So, because like Measure H, they only tack on $2 going one way. So you want to put $2 on the other way?
Correct.
Okay. And oh, so there's $9 mil for the Cabrillo Mole Phase 2? Do we have grant funding for Phase 1?
So Phase 1 was completed. Phase 1 was the substructure repairs. The total project was 5.1 million. We had grant funding of $2.4 million, so we paid $2.7 out of pocket. And that's really what kind of ate up most of the, the 50 cent increase over the last five years, went to paying for Phase 1. The $9 million for Phase 2 would be what our local match requirement would be. Right now, we do have approximately $14 million in grant funding lined up with a local, to, to use all that $14 million, we would have to spend at least $6 million for a total project cost of $20 million. But just based on some of the feedback we've got from estimates, and some of the, the design elements we want to incorporate in, $20 million, I would love to see the project completed for that, but I, I wanted to be cautious putting that number down, just, just given how, how the cost of, of construction goes.
And that's already expensive.
But, but other than grants and whatever on that project, are we, are we going out to any of the private people to, to help with the construction of that for their future use? Are we discussing that?
Meaning?
The vendors, or is a new vendor, or whatever, are we doing any of that?
I mean, all of that will be captured by new leases across the board with everybody that's in that space, everybody that's physically.
But new leases, but couldn't they put money upfront to help build out their place, and then maybe we just don't take as much, you know, we defer their rent for a long time? Does that work, too?
I mean, as we go forward with those leases, when we get down, we don't anticipate giving them anything other than a shell. They're going to be building out their interior space.
Just a shell, okay.
Already. I mean, we're, we're not, you know, like Matt says, I mean, we're, we're hopeful to be in the 20 to $23 million range to build that facility.
Yeah.
And, and right now, you know, we're, with the $14 million in grant funding, which is great, we don't see a whole lot more coming in grant funding.
Yes, okay.
We're, we're going to have to foot the bill for the rest.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay.
I think one of the questions that was brought up was, you know, cruise ship warfage, and the fact that with the new agreement that Disney has, that's also increasing warfage, which is great, so it's not just city or people on the boats that are going to be paying for this. It's going to help significantly, and hopefully, other cruise ships will fall into the same category with the same increase as well. But I know it's tough anytime we look to add additional funding. I had secretly hoped that maybe part of the funding would come instead from the tax increases that we'd had on the ballot a couple of years ago. But since that failed, unfortunately, I feel like this is, it's a necessity to keep service and safety in mind for the harbor, and to be able to fund projects that are necessary. They're not wasteful projects, they're necessary projects.
Absolutely, South Beach, definitely.
Yeah, South Beach.
And if we want to do other bigger projects in the harbor, which we do, we have, we have other things we want to fund just besides these right now, that, that, those funds are necessary for that.
I know, and, you know, I think it's just, it breaks my heart, but you know, it's the way of the world. It's just, every, every time you turn around, there's an increase in something.
Right.
So hard to make a decision like this.
I would like to point out, you know, we, in anticipation somewhat of this, last July, we increased the subsidy amount by $20 per book. So it went from 85 to 105 for the subsidy books. By, you know, we went to Metro and asked to reallocate some of those Metro funds, so we get increased subsidy money, and that's, that wasn't a one-time deal, that's across the board. So, so the, all the books, as of last July, council approved that, so it, it's.
Was that part of that Metro thing tonight?
No, different, separate.
Different.
But I'm happy to ask Fernando for more money, which we talked about doing.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Yeah.
But because of what we did with, really, with the change in Circuit, Circuit freed up that money, in that, in the sense that our monthly allocation to Circuit is significantly less than what we were paying. So we just took that money, went to Metro, reallocated, put it to the subsidy program, and that freed up an extra $20 per book for every other, you know, as we go forward. So this would increase, if you, if you look at a book, five tickets, you know, one way, the round trip, it's a $10. This would be a $10 increase to the books, because it's only going, it's only going.
One way.
One-way leaving.
Right.
Measure H is already encapsulated and coming.
Right, right.
So, you know, and, and we'll continue to work with Metro, we'll continue to try to get some more funds to, to keep adding to that subsidy program.
And, and did you say that fuel surcharge that the Express put on there is sunsetting this year in June, or next year in June?
Last June, they got a two-year extension on that, so it's next year, June. I don't want to say it's absolutely sunsetting, because I don't know if they can get another extension on it.
Start writing to the CPUC people.
Well, once again, you've outlined it quite well. So thank you, and so, council, what's your pleasure? Is there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, council?
I think you bring it back to us so we can pass it.
And this would take effect July, or something?
We would, we would look for a July 1 start.
All right. That was just providing direction, we're good?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Well, good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
And meeting adjourned. Okay.